Thank you all. Number five, a resolution to adopt the solid waste reduction diversion and recycling master plan is developed by Kessler Consulting Incorporated. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Coles, Director of Recycling Trash Collection. I'm here to talk about the solid waste reduction diversion recycling master plan and this recommendation. In 2013, December of 2013, the Council passed a resolution in an effort to, with a goal of achieving in 10 years by 2025, an 80 percent diversion rate, diversion goal. Based on the tenets of that resolution, we then took that next step to send out an RFQ for, to hiring a consultant, to develop a 10-year master plan. And after a rigorous intensive process, Kessler Consulting LLC from Florida, out of Tampa, Florida, we secured their services. We've been, we've been working with them closely during this process. We've, based on recommendations from their recommendations and what we were seeing as we came out of the waste composition study, or completed the waste composition study, we entered into some pilot programs, a residential single-stream collection pilot, about 1,034 homes to the southeast of Fayetteville, also a commercial multifamily, single-stream collection, and then also a food waste to compost collection where we had, I think, nine participants, commercial participants, the U of A, some restaurants and others. That was very, all of those being very successful and realized some really substantial gains in total collection amounts. Tonight, Kessler Consulting is here, Mitch Kessler and Robin Mitchell, to present, give essentially a brief of the plan itself, and, but I will, I will say that as part of the discussion in the memo, as you have in your packet, that this master plan was developed with different scenarios in mind for which waste programs could be changed, altered and developed in order to obtain higher diversion from landfill rates for the city. So, in the intent for it to be a dynamic document, the plan lays out steps in order to obtain higher diversion rates, and staff would be, would be bringing, if adopted, would be bringing items forward subsequent, over, in future years, future time, to implement as was reasonable, as was possible, feasible financially or otherwise. But with that, I'd like to welcome Mitch Kessler and Robin Mitchell, prepared to present their, and then we'll, presumably we have questions.
Sure.
For questions afterwards.
Good evening, y'all.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's nice to be here. We're going to back this up to the beginning and spend about 20, 25 minutes going through the work that we've done in the period, it's been over a year now since we started work on it. So, off we go. Project objectives. The project objectives in our scope of work is develop a master plan for an efficient and cost-effective solid waste system that puts the city on a path to 80 percent diversion. We felt when we interviewed for the job and received the scope, that was a pretty ambitious goal, and if you look at the little thermometers on each side, you have your current program, which is about 18 percent recycling, and then your goal of 80 percent. So that was our scope and that was our task. Tonight, we're going to talk about an overview of the master plan, the pilot programs that we did, and the phased-in action recommendations that we're suggesting. So since this is our first time in front of the full council and at a public meeting, we thought we'd tell you a bit of who we are, and we've been working on the project for over a year. We have spent time at a number of public meetings, we've spent time with some of your subcommittees, and so some of you know us, but a bit of a background on us. The company is 28 years old. We work in the area of solid waste planning exclusively. We have projects in the United States, Canada and abroad, we have projects in Qatar, we have projects in South America, so we do quite a bit of work in solid waste planning and implementation. We have 15 full-time people who spend all their time focused in this particular area. Probably most important, I think, one of the reasons we were hired, our focus is on government work. We've had over 200 government clients in the 28 years. We work for municipalities. We're independent and unbiased, and what we mean by that is we don't sell anything, we don't sell equipment, we don't do engineering work, so we don't design facilities, so whatever you choose doesn't benefit us in any direct way. We're industry leaders, we're on international boards, we're on national boards, we're on local boards, leading the way. We're actually been selected by the Solid Waste Association of North America, and we're just finishing up writing their zero waste, their national zero waste plan. So that's a bit of what we do, who we are. Robin and I have been the principal people involved, we probably have five other people from our office work on the project, but together we have 60 years of solid waste experience, and our background is kind of, is grassroots. And I'll talk a little bit about myself. Robin has worked for the EPA, in a minute I'll talk about myself. Robin's worked for the EPA and has also done a lot of grassroots work, starting recycling organizations from the ground up. The photo off to the side is not the Unabomber. It's actually me in 1978, at Purdue University where I started the first recycling program on campus. I think what's very telling about that is that you notice there's only newspaper, because all those years back, that was really all you could do, and the industry's evolved, but we really started with that grassroots orientation. But enough about us and let's talk about you. We really believe that this is your plan. When I say you, it's the elected officials as well as the citizens of Fayetteville, and there's been a lot of interest. So, the city's goal and objective, well, you know, some people say it's moving towards 80 percent. I would tell you that you're at 18, and anything we could do to get that over 18, be it 25, be it 40, be it 50, or if you lay the groundwork to get to 80, that's great. But it's your plan and your citizens' plan, and we're here to help you implement that and follow our instructions, which were helping you get to 80 percent and lay out how that could be done. Jeff mentioned we worked hand-in-hand with the staff. I mean, I'll tell you, I think you're fortunate to have people like Jerry, Terry and Jeff and Brian and their staff. These guys really work hard and care about what they do, and it's been a pleasure to work with them, and they're pretty committed folks. I mentioned stakeholder input. We've met with both residents and businesses a number of times to talk to them about what they had in mind, and then we applied our knowledge to this. Our success in this is really based on you accomplishing your objectives. I do want to mention that we've been here through the seasons, we have a shop, a photo of your downtown area in the summer, in full bloom, and then last night, the camel rides are really something to experience. It's quite beautiful what you've done down there. It's really a, you know, lovely city you have, and we've enjoyed spending time here. So let's go back to again, what's important is your priorities. We listened to the different people who had input. There's no way in life that you please everybody 100 percent of the time, but we listened and we understood your long-term goal of 80 percent and your priorities. And here's what we heard. We heard clearly that you want to increase recycling in the city. We got it, we looked at ways to do that. We clearly understood that multifamily and commercial recycling are important, that you're doing some commercial recycling, but you want to do more, and you believe that the multifamily and the turnover that you have in some of these really deserve to have recycling attention in a better program. It's very clear that recovered material accountability is important to the city, and I would say, if you don't know that something's being recycled, there's no sense in starting a program. So that to me is a no-brainer, and I applaud you for having something, since you want to know where that material goes and that it's recovered. If it's not recovered, what do you bother starting in the first place? And then organics, it was loud and clear that composting needs to expand in the city. We heard it, and then we began to do the work. And beginning to do the work means turning it over to Robin, who is responsible overall for the day-to-day management of the project, and she's going to talk about the planning process that we went through.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. It's a pleasure being here this evening. So the planning process, we followed a well-defined, methodical planning process, starting with looking at what the city's program is currently doing. We did a very thorough waste composition study that entailed sorting garbage for a week, your garbage. We also did some visual audits that I'll mention, but we wanted to understand what was in your waste stream, and I can, we consider that one of the foundations to identifying where the diversion opportunities are, and I'm going to talk about that in another slide shortly. As Mitch mentioned, we got stakeholder input, and we compiled all that information and those diversion opportunities, and then we identified what the options were to take advantage of those opportunities and try to divert more materials from the landfill to recycling or composting. In the process of doing that and identifying those options, the city identified, as we discussed those options, two, two of them were identified that the city wanted to pilot. Those pilots were not part of our original scope of work, but we, we worked with the city to complete two pilots, and we're going to talk about those tonight as well. We did some scenario modeling and then ultimately put together the final recommendations in the plan that we've presented to you. So let's start with your baseline assessment, what your current system, what you're currently doing. This is really in a nutshell, but we looked at the past 10 years. You have a good program, what you do, you do well. As Mitch mentioned, you have a good crew, they do an excellent job in the collection operations, but as you can see, over the last 10 years, your recycling rate has varied only a little bit from between 16 and 20 percent diversion. So basically, it's pretty much flat. So you're doing a good job, but it's really not moving forward, and quite frankly, that's probably why you hired us, to come in and try to figure out how to drive this forward. A little bit more about the stakeholder input, these are some of the people that we met with. We had a public meeting that was well-attended, we met with various stakeholders as well as some regional groups. I won't go through them all, but we were here several times and did an array of meetings over the period of two, two to three days. And we also conducted a stakeholder survey. This was early on in the process, towards the beginning of the project. We did two online surveys, we worked with the city on this, we worked with city staff to develop the surveys, then the city staff had a link on your website, they advertised them, and you actually got a pretty good response, a pretty good response rate, especially on the residential one. And as you can see, this just highlights some of the key findings of the surveys, but as you can see, the overwhelming of majority of respondents were supportive of your efforts towards 80 percent diversion and supportive of some of the initial ideas that we had that might help drive you towards that diversion rate. So let's talk about diversion opportunities. This may look like a complicated pie chart, but it's one of my favorites, so bear with me. This is basically your waste composition data that we've laid over top of your 2015 tonnage data. And to me, this is again, the foundation, this is what spells out where your opportunities are. So to walk you through it, the two pieces of pie at the top, that's what you're currently doing. That's the 18 percent diversion rate that you achieved in 2015 through recycling and composting. If you look to the right side, the blue and orange slices of pie on the right side, that's your recycling opportunity. Those are the tons of recyclables that are being landfilled. They have the potential to be recycled, but they are still being landfilled, and that's 24 percent or almost a quarter of the waste that you generate. On the other side, the green slices of pie, that's 17 percent of your waste stream, that has the potential to be composted. Again, you'd have to divert it from the waste stream. The majority of that is food waste, as well as some low-grade paper that can't be recycled but could be composted. And then in the bottom left-hand corner, bulky waste and construction and demolition debris that's received at the transfer, at the city's transfer station, that's about 22 percent of the waste you generate. A substantial portion of that has the potential to be recycled. So those are your opportunities, and if you add all those together, they actually total about 63 percent. Are you going to get all those? No. You're not going to be able to capture all those. But that's where we placed our focus on how to divert more of those tons from the landfill and to either recycling or composting. Let me go back one minute. Oops. So, as I mentioned before, when we looked at these diversion opportunities and identified some options, that's when we identified the two potential pilot programs that city staff decided they wanted to pursue. So it was mainly looking at the compostable streams as well as the recyclable streams. So the first pilot program we helped the city with was a commercial food waste pilot program. Now the city, as you know, you own your own composting facility, which is great, and you do, do a great job out there composting yard waste. The, the main, what we mainly wanted to demonstrate through this pilot were two things. The ability to collect food waste from commercial businesses and the ability to co-compost it with the yard waste at your own facility. And the pilot program was very successful, and I'm, staff, if you haven't talked to them yet about it, I'm sure they'll fill you in on it. There were no odors, they used a composting method that was very successful, they produced a quality end product compost. And I think certainly as important as how the logistics of the composting went, is what the pilot participants had to say about it. And we did do a survey of the nine participants, all nine participants responded, and they all responded positively to the pilot program. These are just a few of their comments that they offered in response to the pilot program. And I will say, it was very successful, and I believe that city staff is currently trying to get a permit from DEQ to be able to accept food waste at that facility in the future so that you're on your way to proceeding if you so choose. The second pilot program that city staff wanted to pursue was a single-stream collection pilot. And I say collection, it's important, it's an important fact, point to make, that this was really evaluating the collection element of single-stream recycling, not the processing, mainly because there is no state-of-the-art, single-stream processing facility in northwest Arkansas. So we weren't able to evaluate that. GP Harmon was kind enough to, to offer to hand-sort the materials at their facility here in Fayetteville. It is not at all what you would normally do with single-stream recyclables, but they were able to, they were willing to take the materials just from the pilot and hand-sort them into materials that they then did recycle. And I know, I believe Chuck Schmidt is here tonight too, and he can talk to you about that if, if you so choose. We rarely, the city ran two pilots, one for the curbside program and one for multifamily. Again, we knew multifamily was important to you. So let's talk about some of the results. So let's talk, first, talk about the collection efficiency itself, and that's from the city sanitation crew's perspective. What did it mean to those drivers on the street running the routes? Well, instead of taking over a minute per household, it took them seven seconds per household to service each house, which is a huge improvement in collection efficiency, which in turn translates into a cost savings and also into significantly increased worker safety. Because what you have out there right now is essentially a single-stream program where all your residents are putting everything in a bin, but you basically have one-man manual material recovery facilities out there, sorting at the curb, which is, it's, it's a dangerous thing to do, they do it in all sorts of weather, and you can talk to, again, city staff about the attrition rate for that particular position. So a huge improvement over collection efficiency as well as the working conditions for those Let's talk about from the resident's perspective. During the pilot program, on average, 52 percent more households placed their recycling curbside during the pilot program than before the pilot program. Basically, that's participation. About 52 percent participated, more people participated on a weekly basis. And how does that equate to tons of materials, which is what, to me, we are ultimately after? During the pilot program, in the curbside program, 94 percent more materials were collected. Almost 100 percent increase, almost a doubling. And in the multifamily, the results were even greater, about 126 percent increase, and that's pounds per unit per week is how we measured that one. And again, these are not, it's nice data, but we always care about what the participants and what the residents had to say. So we also did a survey of the single-stream participants. Again, these are just a few of their comments, but of the roughly 1,000 households in the pilot program, 288 responded. That's huge. Nearly 30 percent of the pilot participants responded to this survey. 98 percent of those respondents said, yes, I would support expanding single-stream recycling So what does this mean on a broader scale? We took the pilot results, and let's just look at the curbside data. In 2015, you recovered approximately 3,100 tons of recyclables from your curbside program. Again, based on the pilot, you would approximately double that. Yes, there is a greater percentage of residue. There always will be with single stream. But what this depicts is, in your curb sort program now, there's about 3 percent residue in a single-stream program, in a program with good education where the materials are processed at a state-of-the-art material recovery facility, or MRF, you can expect about 15 percent residue. And you just do the math, and you're still going to end up with over 2,200 more tons of recyclables out of the landfill that are being recycled, and that's recycled. That's just, that's just the residential curbside. So to me though, where the real opportunity exists is in multifamily and commercial, because your current program of collecting materials segregated from each other has really been difficult to implement, and again, you can talk to your city, city staff themselves, it's been very difficult to implement in the multifamily and commercial sector. In fact, you only have six multifamily complexes who have even been willing to try to participate. You used to have seven, but one, one of them dropped out. So without going to single stream, it's very difficult to implement an aggressive recycling program in the multifamily and commercial sector.
So we wanted to talk to you a bit about costs and the need, what we call balancing the system costs. What we're getting at there is that, I think sometimes when we talk about solid waste, we forget that it's a service business, and all services have a cost. It costs to recycle, it costs to transfer waste, it costs to collect yard waste, it costs to dispose the waste. So there's always a cost, and we make that point because we do not believe that you should look at the services as a revenue generator. It's a service, and your decision is what service you want to offer at what cost. So everything has a cost, including disposing of garbage has a tip fee at a landfill. We wanted to talk briefly about the, our proposed action plan, and I want to emphasize that we set it up in the document as a phased approach, and again, our task was to, how can you get, what would it take to get to 80 percent? We talked about the ambition of that goal, but if you look at the three phases we have, it's a step-by-step phased-in approach. You could adjust and control the timing of when you put those phases in place, and we'd offer you that a solid waste plan is a dynamic document that evolves as you make these decisions. It's not meant to be, here's the answers to all things, it's meant to be, here's what it could look like. So we wanted to start with phase one, and our phase one of this approach is organics and single-stream recycling. And with those two, our estimates, which could be a little bit, they were conservative, we didn't want to go overboard, but the increase gets you to about 26 percent recycling rate. Nothing to be ashamed of, because that's actual accurate counting of 26 percent. We live in the state of Florida who does a form of voodoo in their accounting, and it's just, you know, every state, every government has a different way of accounting, but these are real numbers. It's what's recovered in the numerator, it's what's disposed in the denominator, you divide those out, you get to a recycling rate, it's real tons. So we think that in phase one, that would be your starting point, and we'd want to emphasize that in all phases, you always need education, you always need outreach, and you always need technical assistance to businesses, because they need support and guidance in how to make the program work. So that's our phase one approach, and again, emphasize that you can adopt these as you see fit at your future meetings and add to them. The second phase is focusing, our suggestion is focusing on construction and demolition materials, and then monitoring and enhancing the program. Now that gets you to somewhere around 40 percent. Now 40 percent is pretty darn good, and there are very few communities in this part of the country that are actually hitting 40 percent. So I don't want you to think that that's a shabby undertaking, and again, those phases, in all the phases, education and outreach, we can't emphasize enough, because if you don't do the right education and outreach, and you don't communicate to the business and residents, you're bound for problems. The third phase fits into the challenge we had and what our scope required, which is how do you get to this high performance, and how do you move towards 80 percent? I would tell you that if you look around the country at any program that's even holding out that they have 80 percent, the only way they get anywhere near that number, and I would say over 60 percent, you'll be challenged to find the jurisdiction of significant population, over 50,000 people, that has done anything to get over 56 percent, that doesn't have strong public policy driving things. And I'm talking about some of those words that aren't very popular in this community, bans and mandates, some people like them, some people don't. Our belief is that we don't think the city is ready for mandates and bans. You might want to do it, you might not, but we're not suggesting doing them, what we're suggesting is that you will need to do those. When you look at the San Franciscos and the Seattle's and the progressive communities, they all have some kind of requirement that is taking public policy and pushing those numbers further. So all I'd say to you is that that's down the road, and we're not suggesting doing it now, I think you need to walk before you start sprinting. That's our take on the situation. So Robin spent some time talking about the system, and one of the things that the report in particular talks about and provides detail in the plan for each of the three phases that we talk about. And for each of those, there's a discussion on facilities, programs and policies. We just wanted to be clear that the facilities are the infrastructure that you need to manage the material. You can't compost if you don't have the right-sized compost facility with the right equipment. You can't do additional recycling processing if you or somebody doesn't have a processing center to be able to do that. I think one of the questions you have on facilities is the public-private nature and the partnership of that. Your landfilling is done by the private sector. You operate the collection, you operate the transfer station, you operate the compost. We're not suggesting you don't operate, we actually think government operation really provides some additional benefits and services, and we think you're doing a real good job on the operations that you have. So each of these facilities, the three phases of facilities are all discussed, the three phases of the program are all discussed, I mentioned that you do the collection of the program. In the programs, you have to do significant education and provide that technical assistance, which we mentioned, and lastly is policies. In all the phases, there are policies that you'd have to adopt to do food composting in the commercial sector, to, to single stream if you choose to do that. So there's facilities, programs and policies. Wrapping up, we've come up with what we call our Fayetteville 12-step program. So it's our recommendations for the initial first phase, I want to emphasize the first phase, phase one implementation steps. And there are 12 of them, but we're suggesting that you start with the first six. And you can see those here, it's conceptual approval of the proposed plan, you could do that in part or in phases. We understand for some meetings we had, that since there's a couple aldermen who are not here tonight, you're going to be discussing these topics again, but again, I want to emphasize that you could break that up any way that you see fit. We think adopting a policy to explore single-stream recycling further makes sense, and we say that because to determine if single-stream recycling can or cannot work, we've had discussions with many people in the area about a regional facility. We had it the suggestion of city staff, we looked at you doing it through a mini MRF on your own, and one of our recommendations is that, is there anybody in the private sector who would come in and build a MRF, a state-of-the-art, single-stream MRF? Well, the answer to that, if it's only Fayetteville's residential material, probably not. However, there are many companies and businesses that control in this area a lot of commercial recyclables, that could grow that business further and might be very interested in coming in and putting in a privately-owned partnership situation where you contract with them to operate a facility. So we're suggesting in number three, that you would do some type of procurement to see if there's interest. If there's no interest, you know that a single-stream program's not going to work. If there's interest and it's financially viable, then you have something to look at further. Step-by-step, walk before you run. Number four is the residential multifamily and commercial recycling implementation plan, you'd have to put a plan in place to do that. You'd have to put a plan in place to do that. Staff spends a lot of time and energy, as Robin mentioned, trying to serve the multifamily. Your cost per ton on that is outrageously high. So to expand that is going to be a real challenge if you don't single stream. But that's one of the things you'll need a plan for, and we've mentioned a number of times, the organics and the food waste. So we think it's time to move towards some level of implementation. I'm not going to go through the last six steps, because they're really contingent on the outcome of the first six, but you could see what we're getting out there, which is communication, technical assistance, and some of the other items that are here. So what's your path forward? Well, again, you're currently at 18 percent. You all probably have some different opinions on if 18 percent is acceptable, or how far you're willing to push to move to the goal of 80 percent. Doesn't take a genius to figure out that there's a big gap between 18 and 80. And it's your decision, and it's your plan, as I mentioned earlier, to decide how much you want to push that. Our suggestion is you take the initial steps that we laid out. They'd be virtually very small cost to do that, but it'll give you answers to some of the questions that you need. We mentioned a couple of times phasing the program. The report is written as a three-praise program. You could take it step-by-step if you choose to do that. Regardless, it has to be all generators of material. It's the residential, it's the commercial, it's the institutions, and the schools, et cetera, et cetera. There's no way to get a high diversion program that we would define as 50 percent and over without going after all the generators and all the materials that there's a market for. There's no sense in collecting materials that there's no market for. But there's people here who will probably speak tonight, we'll talk to you about, that there's many markets for many grades of paper, many grades of plastic, many grades of metal, et cetera, et cetera. So, but it has to be recycled. You know that, we know that. The path forward also includes the facilities, programs, and policies that are necessary, the education and technical assistance, and we leave you that the decision as policymakers that you have, is the estate status quo, or do you move to a change? Does that change 25 percent, 40 percent, 50 percent? That's up to you. We've laid out a path that we think you can get there. And with that, we thank you for your time. And I know you're going to take public comment, and after that, we'd be happy to answer any questions we could be helpful with. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Kessler on that? Yes?
I do have just a couple of questions. You mentioned in your report and also in the presentation, which was nice, thank you, that the contamination rate at a single stream facility was approximately 15 percent. Did, I didn't see in the report where it included contamination from single streams, single stream programs at the secondary processors.
Well, there's two places, three places contamination and residue comes from. The first is, if there's not good education and people are putting in material, that shouldn't be there. The second place is processing residue at the MRF. And the third place is the back end, and I think Chuck Schmidt is here, and they run many paper mills, is the processing residue that occurs. That occurs with any material, be it segregated newspaper, be it segregated glass, there's always processing residue. So our 15 percent is based on a state-of-the-art MRF with the latest and greatest equipment. Generation's about 15 percent. If you would up that number, if you believe it's higher to 20 percent, you still have a 65 percent increase in the amount of recyclables you receive in the city.
Okay. But just, just so I know what your report actually means, it doesn't take into consideration things that are kicked out at the secondary processors after leaving the MRF?
Well, I think we addressed that that occurs, but we did not go to paper mills, to aluminum smelters to come up with that number.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question for now, on some formulated my thoughts. You use the phrase a couple of times, a state-of-the-art materials recovery facility. I'm really only familiar with some of the facilities that are in Arkansas, which don't have a great reputation. Can you contrast the facilities I might be more experienced, or I might have a better understanding of, like Little Rock, with the kind of facility you're referring to?
Yeah, be happy to. It's a great question. It's, you know, I look at the MRF industry, which people would argue, single-stream MRFs went into place about 20 years ago. It's like, how old is your MRF? How old is your car? If you have a 20-year-old car, it doesn't look anything like a 2016 model. So the facilities in Arkansas do not, and I would emphasize, do not have the latest and greatest state-of-the-art equipment. And so what would be a definition of that? So we're talking about eddy current, which is pretty basic, and they do have. We're talking about air separation and ballistic separators and screens, which have evolved tremendously over the last five years, never mind the last 20 years. We're talking about the number of optical sorters in a facility. And optical sorters being things that can actually read the type of paper or type of plastic and automatically sort that. It's almost become like science fiction, and if you go to one of our industry conferences, what's now being talked about is becoming robotic. And robot's actually doing the sorting through these optics. So do I think you need to go that far? No. But does a modern facility have to have the latest and greatest screens, maximize optical sorting, et cetera? And some of the items I missed, yes. And that's the only way you'll get 15 percent contamination left over. Some of the facilities in Arkansas, my hunch is, have way over 20 percent residue and contamination in that facility. And that, to me, is just, you know, not ideal. So when anybody talks to you about a processing facility, I would say, when was it built? What renovations have been made to it? And if you want to see some of the latest and greatest facilities, there are many around the country. There are many equipment people who would tell you, come see this one, come see that one. And they're about 15 percent contamination.
Okay, one other, one other question for now. In your phasing, if you had phase one as organics and single stream, and phase two with construction and demolition waste, as well some enhancements, the, the gain we get from constructions and demolition looks to be a little bit more, you're predicting than it would be in going to single stream? Did I get that right? So my question, my question is then, if, if that, if that's not so contingent on regional cooperation, if construction and demolition recovery is not so contingent on regional cooperation, and some of the other factors that may be beyond our control, do you think maybe reversing the order of those two things is just as viable for us or maybe better?
Yeah, the, the percentage gains in phase two is not all from the C and D.
Okay.
When we did our predictive model, we assumed that the single stream and the organics would be phased in, and we would continue to grow. So phase one is three years, and it would be phasing in those over those first three years. And where you got at the end of those, that three years, we predicted would be about 26 percent. The next two years is phase two. It's continuing to phase in and expand those two programs. So that jump up in phase two is not solely from C and D.
Although we do think C and D is an important component.
Yeah, so I don't want to, it does offer a lot of opportunity there. What I would say about C and D, it seems like a great opportunity, but the amount of C and D you get at your facility seems to fluctuate widely each year. And in 2015, it was sort of at a high point. And you need a certain amount of C and D if you're even going to consider doing a facility. And what you had in 2015 was just marginally there. So I think that you need to look at, at different options, and that's in the plan, too. There are two C and D facilities that, when I checked just a couple months ago in September, I talked to DEQ, there are two facilities, one in Lowell, one in Bentonville, where, that were about to get their permits. And these are C and D processing facilities. I think it's worth looking at what those facilities can do and what opportunities they can provide, so that you might not have to do your own C and D processing facility. And instead, again, you would put policies in place or programs in place that would encourage contractors to recycle C and D debris without you actually having to build a facility. But I do think it is a tremendous opportunity. It's, it's not an opportunity that the city itself has the same level of control over that, as you do with the residential and commercial waste that you collect. That's also collected by private haulers, in other words. So the private haulers do control some of the C and D debris that's collected in your city.
Good, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay. We have had a request by one of the council members not to vote on this resolution tonight because he's out of town. And I think one of the reasons for that, he wanted to get as much public input as possible. I know that the chair of the water and sewer committee is not here as well. I would really like to have a full council when, because this is a major decision, one way or the other. I would certainly like to have a full council when we vote on this. But having said that, we will take public comment. Okay, okay, hang on, everybody. For everybody. Now, remember that we'll probably be back here in two weeks, and we will probably have the same discussion again. But hang on. But now, here's the rules for public speaking. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone. Everybody keep your comments to the chair, which would be me. Don't engage anybody in the public. And one turn to mic, unless council member brings you back up to ask a specific question, please give us your name. And here we go.
My name is Tom, Tom Stones, and I'm living in, in Fayetteville, and this is to the mayor. I do not know, even though I lived in Fayetteville for four or five years before this stint, I had a bigger house, and I was still perplexed by the plastics that got re, left in my recycling bin. And I'm still perplexed by the plastics left in my recycling bin. And you have to have your newspapers in a paper sack, and you have to have the paper sacks so-so in the recycle bin. Now, I'm telling you that the real world of, is that, that's the real world. I explained to my neighbor next door that she didn't break down those paper boxes that she was putting in a recycle bin, they'd never pick them up. And, and that's where we are as consumers.
Okay. Thank you. Who else would like to address this tonight?
Good evening. My name is Sidney Conover. I'm the assistant director at the Benton County Solid Waste District in Bentonville, and I'm going to read a statement on behalf of the district. The council, to the council members, the Benton County Regional Solid Waste Management District Board and staff wish to express our support of single stream recycling. Single stream recycling has demonstrated long-term effectiveness in dramatically increasing the total volume of material collected and recycled through curbside recycling programs. While the percentage of contamination does increase with single stream recycling, there is significantly more volume of good-quality recycled material than there is with curbside systems. We believe there is a critical need for a regional single stream recycling facility. The Benton County District is very interested in developing a single stream processing facility in northwest Arkansas, which is capable of serving the entire region. We are willing and eager to enter into discussions with other government agencies and/or private partners to facilitate the construction and operation of such a facility. We are committed to increasing the volume of material recycled in Benton County and throughout our area. We deeply appreciate the city of Fayetteville's leadership in developing critical data regarding available material volumes and composition. This information will assist in determining the feasibility of various types of processing facilities. Adoption of single stream recycling by the city of Fayetteville will increase the volume avail, the volume of available material to a sufficient quantity that will allow the region to support a processing facility. We want to thank you for the opportunity to come up, to comment on the proceedings, and we wish you well with your decision-making process.
Could I have your name again, please?
Sidney Conover. That's the Benton County Solid Waste District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to address this?
Hello, my name is Kelly Mulholland, and I just, I think it would be ironic if, in this good effort to try to reach a, a better state of recycling and less solid waste by the year 2050, that we would actually go backwards and adopt something that is known to be less efficient. Now, I know that it might be, it might create more bulk, but I mean actually less efficient per unit. And for that re, it seems like kind of a dumbing down of the system, trying to accommodate people who simply don't know better. And it seems through public education that we might be able to solve that same problem. We already have a system that is very efficient and environmentally friendly, and we're looking at moving towards something that could create substantially more waste per unit. So it seems like a step backwards.
Thank you.
My name's Annie Littell, and I live here in Fayetteville. And I'd especially like to ask these questions while the Kessler people are here, because they might be able to answer them. One thing, I totally support the idea of having more things get recycled, so don't get me wrong on that. One thing I'm wondering, I personally favor the system we have, but I'm wondering why we didn't use any mention of dual stream. It was mentioned in the report, but only in passing. And my understanding of dual stream is that it's very similar pickup of the single stream, this one cart, but it's divided. And you could have all your paper and cardboard in one side, and then all the other stuff on the other side, and then you have a divided truck that you tip it in. So you'd still have the problem of everything getting smashed together, but the paper would be kept dry, not in the Coke can residue and such. And according to the report, on page 61, they were talking about the pilot, and it said fifty, well, didn't say this, but I added it up, 56 percent of the weight was cardboard, newspaper, and mixed paper. That was in the curbside. And in the multifamily one, it was 57 percent. So that's a lot of the weight, is the paper and the cardboard. So it seemed to me that that was worth keeping clean. I think it's all worth keeping clean, but if we had to go to one of these other systems, I'm wondering why we didn't consider a pilot on dual stream. I wish we had, and I, we can't go back perhaps, but it just seems to me that that is worth considering. And I don't know if there's anything else out there that's worth considering for apartments. I know that's our biggest problem, is what we can do with apartments. I noticed at the Mill Street development, which isn't a huge apartment complex, I'll admit, they were putting out their own green bins and had them labeled, and I saw a woman putting her things in there, sorting them as she went along, which we don't have to do at home. But, so that's a question that I'd like to find out. And I'm also just noticing in the report that there was, a lot of the reasons people were encouraged to use this single stream, which was really the only thing offered to them, I mean, it was like, what we have or single stream, 51 percent of them said it was container issues. And we could have a rolling cart now. We don't, the rolling cart is not have anything to do with single stream only. It could be a rolling cart for people right now. So to me, that cart, everybody loved the cart. It was obvious if you read the report. And that's great. I'm getting older myself, so maybe a rolling cart would be really nice. But that's not critical. It could be a rolling cart that had our bin on it or whatever. So that's really not the issue. And, and 45 percent said some kind of reward incentive would make the difference. Again, that has nothing to do with single stream versus whatever, you know, incentives. I'm not sure what we're talking about here. I guess money prizes, you know? But anyway, that was the kind of things that were mentioned in the survey of encouragements, which really had nothing to do with single stream. They came out in the survey about single stream, but they were not limited to single stream. And also, I think the confusion about the different kinds of plastic that were picked up in the pilot. Everybody loved that, they could put their yogurt containers in there. We know, we can't recycle those right now because we don't have a market for it. That was perhaps dishonest, at least misleading and unfortunate, I think, because that made people think, single stream means we can recycle more kinds of plastic, which it does not, unless we have a market. And maybe if we had a bigger volume, we would have a market. I don't know. I guess nobody knows that for sure right now. I've got a million things I could say, but I think that's enough. There's plenty of other people here that will say.
Thank you, Annie. We'll get, we'll have them weigh in, whatever questions we've got. I would like to get them all the questions and then meet you all, instead of back and forth at the podium right now. Yes?
Thank you. My name is Steve Parker, and I was in the pilot program. And it seems to me we've got two situations that have been addressed partially. One was, people do not know exactly what can be recycled. And if that could be even put on the lid... And if that could be even put on the lid of the container, so that people know what exactly could be recycled, that would help. The second thing that I would like to say is, we need to have publicity by the City of Fayetteville and say, "We are at 18%. We need to get to 80%. And when we hit 25%, we need to have a celebration. When we have 40%." And get the people involved, because if you get the people involved and they believe that we are moving toward a goal, they're going to participate. I know that my neighbors have said they would much rather have the single bin than the three bins that we have. And that's fine. But I think the majority of them are ready to recycle, but they do not know that there is 18% now, and that you have a goal for 80%. That needs to be publicized, so that people get on the bandwagon, and even have community areas that say, "Okay, our area, we want to be 50%, 60%, whatever it might be." And really make it a challenge. In our area, we have a neighborhood email. I live in Stonebridge area. We have a neighborhood email. And that's a wonderful communication between the people in the community. And if we started having a challenge, or whatever we need to do to get to that 40%, 50%, 60%, 70%, 80%, people would respond. I don't think people know that we are only doing 18%, and you want to have 80%. It has to be publicized and get the people on board.
Thank you. All right, all right, let's, please. All right. Who would like to be next?
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Gladys Tiffany. I'm Fayetteville resident. And I'd like to suggest that the publicity on that recycling program should be done by that last speaker. And in addition, I want to tell you how impressive the study that was done has been, and how much useful information I can see has come out of that study. So, I'm really glad that we did that study. The one drawback I see with it is that it focuses so much on single stream to the exclusion of other options, the dual stream that was mentioned being a good one. And to consider that, that the opportunity to educate about recycling is something that we have needed for a long time, anyway. And to consider that recycling is something that every generation really can engage in is a very important part of how we actually carry this from generation to generation. And I think it really does need to be taken into consideration for Fayetteville, because this is such a hub for so many things that can really benefit us. And the major part, problem that I have with the single stream is the fact that I really have been hearing way too much information about how single stream is not nearly as viable, that it has a lot of economic and process problems that have not yet come out, but they are emerging in places where these, the programs are in place, in ways that I think, it makes me feel that, in the event that, that we jumped in and took, took on single stream, where we are going to have to be building a huge, complex, state-of-the-art MRF, that we're going to have to be doing things that do not really, we are going to be stuck on this stream of single stream, in spite of the fact that it's still an untested method. That I really believe that in another 10 years, we could look back at that and see whether this is really worth it. But until then, we're really in a place where, untested territory, that I'm not sure we want to be there. And if we put the money into that education program that we are planning to spend on the MRF and the changeover to the whole process, we could, we could do this process and move toward a much improved diversion rate, in a way that could really let us be sustainable and in control of our waste stream, in ways that we will never, never be able to do with the single stream process. So, I'd really like to encourage us to think of other options and string, single stream, and, and be sure that there really are.
Thank you, Gladys.
Aubrey Shepherdwell. Everybody's making good points. I just want to say that I think we need to expect that maybe just the youngest members of this group sitting there tonight should actually see a MRF built in northwest Arkansas. Because we know how fast the technology can change. They've talked about that. And I'm sure it can get to that level, that single stream can be cleaned, and it can go to 80%. But you've still got to have the people who will participate. And you know what that means? That's the elephant in this room, isn't it? You've got to force people to do it, or get fines, you know? You can't do this. People throw their cups in front of my house and yours. I clean up something like that every day, some junk. It floats down our streams, all this debris that people just throw out. So, until there's some, some incentive, incentive sounds sweeter than requirements, or whatever. You know, people just don't care. So many of them do not care, just like they don't care about many other issues that they should be paying attention to. So, I would just ask you to, you can't deny this is a well-thought-out plan, and, but as far as getting, thinking that 80% is going to occur in five years or 10 years, no matter what you do, that's absurd. I hope it happens, and I'm 122 and can celebrate with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Aubrey, I'll be here.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. I'm Teresa Turk, 1408 West Cleveland. Thanks so much for conducting this study. I used to live in Seattle, Washington, and also Washington DC, and I used single stream all the time. Yes, it's very convenient. It's great. It's a no-brainer. You know, you don't have to think about really what you're throwing in there, because at least in those two systems, they pretty much took everything. However, now that I'm here in Fayetteville and this issue is up for debate, I'm know, I'm learning a lot more about the contamination rate. I actually think, from what I've heard and what I've read, 15% seems a bit low. That's an estimate. It wasn't tested here, so we don't really know if that's a true and accurate rate. So, I think we should be very cautious about using that rate. I would really like to know what, what the cost of the MRF will be. I'm kind of, I'm, I would say I'm kind of frugal. So, I, if it ain't broke, don't fix it and spend a lot more money. As we've heard earlier, I think that a lot more education needs to be done by the city. You know, there could be different, lots of different programs. I think there could be, you know, some kind of work, some collaboration with the U of A, because we need to educate our young people early. We need to get them right when they come into Fayetteville. Many other Arkansas towns, especially small, little towns, they don't have a recycling program. These students are not used to recycling. They don't know the process. They haven't been educated about it. And I really think that it should start in orientation when they get up here. And maybe they wouldn't throw so many cups out. Maybe they might change their behavior more early on. Last night, I flew in from Boston. Boston actually has curbside recycling. They do not have single stream. So, I just want to know, why can't we take a look at what a big city like Boston does, and how they're able to be successful with curbside recycling? So, I just think a lot more options need to be put out there. I really, I, I'm so used to the curbside, I would really hate to change it and go back. Yes, we need to increase our recycling rate. 18% is too small. But most people, they don't know that. They really don't know it. So, I think pushing a, a big educational outreach would be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. All right. Who else would like to address this?
My name is Joanne Ocheski, 102 East Elm. I want to thank you for this, for a number of reasons. One, I'm an ex-environmentalist teacher, and I'm a businesswoman. So, I understand resources. I don't see a difference between economics and environment. Also, I love what we're doing in Fayetteville. I love that I can take my yard waste. I love that I can get compost. I love that we recycle. And on a personal level, I'm editing a book. It's Worms Eat My Garbage by Mary Applehoff. And I'm updating chapter 14 on recycling. And I'm hoping to use the City of Fayetteville as an example in this book. It's just been picked up by Story Publishing. That is the old garden way. And we expect to sell between 300 and 700,000 copies. And I'd love to have us in here. So, my question tonight is this. We are now recycling 18%.
Excuse me, just a moment, I would.
Music, that's great.
It's, it's nice, but we really need sound and phones, okay?
I thought we had a personal assistant.
All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, on phase one, we were given the percentage of 26%. That over three years, we would get to 26%. But that, and again, I'm an ex-CPA, so the numbers don't add up. What, they included single stream and organics. Now, I'm really interested in organics. Verma composting, that's organic, you know, that's composting with worms. Certain kinds, some are invasive. We only use the non-invasive. So, my question that I would like to know is, how do you get from 18% to 26%, which is an 8% increase, going single stream and organics? Pull the organics out of there, please. Or tell me what you get with the organics. Because I, I can't decide if that's a good thing or not. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to more information.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Gosman, and I moved here a little more than two years ago, from Ann Arbor, Michigan, that did have a single-stream recycling. And they actually, I believe, did single-stream recycling while I was there. And I, I think that I come at it from a different perspective. I mean, I think that was a great idea. I think it got people really excited about recycling in a way that just wasn't happening before that. It was not uncontroversial, and there are still issues, as far as I understand. But it was another college town, and I think part of the set of issues there was, how do we encourage college students to really recycle? And on that front, I think there was some progress. So, I recognize all of the issues that are at stake here, the contamination concerns. I recognize the fact that, you know, we want to make sure that we're actually taking recyclables that are going to be bought, and make sure that there's a market for them. But I guess I have some faith that this system will work for Fayetteville. And I think that would be, that, I, I think that you would have to make that decision before you approved a single-stream recycling program. And, and as I understand it, that's not what's at stake here. What's at stake here is approving a plan that goes through a whole bunch of different options. But I would, yeah, I would say that I think single-stream recycling can work. And back to this question of sort of people's excitement. So, I teach environmental law at the law school here. I mean, I feel like a lot of what environmental issues are about is convincing people to care about them. And it's funny that sort of having a big cart and telling people to recycle might cause people to care about environmental issues, but I actually think it does. I think it does, they're like, wow, I'm doing something about the environment. And my hope is that by doing that, they might actually think about other environmental issues, too. So, that may not be something that you would base your decision on in terms of this program, but I think it's important to have sort of the psychological side of things. And I think that was a big thing for me, and I care about environmental issues. But I got really excited about the fact that I could recycle all of these things. It made a huge difference to me. So, that's my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah Levy, and I'm with Ripple Glass out of Kansas City. And we partner with the City of Fayetteville with their glass recycling. So, when the glass gets recycled here in the city, it gets sent to our plant in Kansas City, where we manufacture it into furnace-ready collet. That gets made into fiberglass insulation, new bottles and jars. So, I just wanted to talk to you all tonight about the co-mingling of glass into the recycling stream, and just provide our perspective from the recipients of the glass that you all collect. We've been partners with the city for the past five years. In fact, we just celebrated our five-year anniversary for our partnership, which is really exciting. We have been and will always be committed to the City of Fayetteville in their glass recycling efforts. Over the past five years, the city has seen increases in their glass recycling rates. Last year, they recycled 1,596 tons of glass, which is really something to be proud of. When you look at the recycling rates, based on the population of Fayetteville and the amount of glass that gets generated in the city with close to 1,600 tons, you're looking about 50% of the glass generated is actually recycled into new bottles and fiberglass insulation. That's actually one of the highest rates that we've seen in all of the cities that we work with. So, you all should be very proud with the glass recycling that you do here. It also rivals the rates that we see in a lot of the bottle bill states, which is also very neat. Providing you some background on Ripple Glass, our founders, when they went out to look to see about glass recycling in the Kansas City area, they actually toured different cities and reviewed a lot of different programs in countries around the world to see what best practices were for glass recycling. One of those things that they found was the separation of glass from all other materials that are recycled. When you look at a study done by the Container Recycling Institute, they say, "Glass is the material most affected by the amount of breakage in each type of collection system. In single-stream programs, it is virtually impossible to prevent glass from breaking as it goes through the curb, into the truck, gets compacted, gets tipped onto the material recovery facility's floor, and then goes through the conveyor." In, in general, the final commodities from single-stream programs will be more contaminated than those in drop-off programs that are separated out from other recycled materials. And that's really just due to that broken glass. Personally, our experience with single stream hasn't been very good. We have very strict standards that we must maintain for our end-user, Owens Corning, who is, actually makes the fiberglass insulation. And every time we've tried to integrate single-stream material into our plant, our quality measures have dropped significantly, and we haven't been able to maintain that quality standards that we need to actually sell that material to the end-user. When looking at different cities that we work with, one city in Kansas started with a drop-off program and was collecting glass separately, and actually decided to go single-stream. Prior to the city going into that single-stream program, we were collecting about 100 tons a month, on average, from that city. After they implemented their single-stream program and had their glass going at the curbside with other materials, we, that, that number dropped to about 60 tons per month. And so, while every resident had the option to recycle their glass at the curbside, we were still seeing about 40% less glass than we did prior to the start of that program. And that was really due to the overall ineffective recovery processes for glass in the single-stream programs. In addition to that, there are many other cities, large and small, who have actually gone from single-stream to excluding glass from that, their programs. Cities like Sioux City, Iowa, Houston, Texas, Atlanta, Georgia, have since modified their programs to exclude glass from single-stream. And this was really just due to the cost, or the processing cost burden of the glass contamination of the materials, as well as the cost of getting rid of those glass segments that get broken down in that process, that were generated in those systems. Our experience with glass recycling, when separating the material out, has been greater than 95% recovery rates. So, think about the close to 1,600 tons that is recycled here in Fayetteville. 95% of that glass, you can guarantee, is going to an end-user to be made into fiberglass insulation or new bottles and jars. So, current, or, you know, so I guess all in all, you know what Fayetteville currently does with their program, with the drop-offs and curb sort and their commercial and their commercial programs that separate the glass out is really something that we would like to see keep moving forward. As you take into the master plan and a single-stream into consideration, I strongly urge you to keep glass excluded from that single-stream program. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us?
Hi, I'm Dot Neely, Ward 3. And I have come into this, you know, fairly recently. And I'm sure that, that there's been a lot of, of study by the city council on this issue. First of all, I'd like to say, I lived 11 years in the state of Connecticut. And recycling was mandatory there. And there, people just did it. There was, in the state, in the New England states, there is a container deposit at point of purchase. And that's something I understand would have to be something the state would decide, I think. I don't think just a city can decide that, but I'm, I'm not sure. But there was a nickel for aluminum cans and the smaller size plastic soda bottles. And then the 2-liter size soda bottles were 10 cents deposit. And at your point of purchase, you would pay the deposit, and then you could go back to where you purchased and, and turn the bottles or cans in and receive your money back. Or there were these reverse vending machines where you could go, one was for aluminum cans, one was for plastics. And you could feed your containers into these reverse vending machines, and they would keep track of what you would feed in. And then you'd get a ticket out at the end with the count on it. And you would go into the cash register, and they would give you your money back for, for the amount of money that, the number of cans or bottles you put. And it was, there were glass vending, reverse vending machines also. So, a, as a result of this, with the deposit on, on the containers, there was very little litter on the road sides in Connecticut, in New England, because not, not only were, like, people all the time going out, New Englanders are very thrifty, and they would go out and gather these up. But people would want their deposits back. And also, schools would have fundraisers for different athletic organizations, or their choir, or their bands, and they would have can and bottle drives. And people that had been collecting their cans and bottles in their homes would bring them. And the students would get the benefit of the money for returning the recyclables. So, so that's, that's one, you know, view of this. But it, recycling was mandatory, and we just did it. At the recycling drop-off centers, there were long metal buildings with reusable items, like furniture and lamps and, and, you know, wagons, whatever people didn't want. And it was like a, a free flea market. And people would drop off what they couldn't use anymore, and other people would come take what they could use. And so those things stayed out of the landfill. I, I, what, what I'm getting at here is there, there are a lot of resourceful, creative, fairly low-cost, I think, alternatives and entrepreneurial opportunities with, with, you know, our waste stream. Another thing, too, is I, I've just done a, just a quick search of single-stream recycling pros and cons. And every article that I've read in, in that Google search, that weights, at least in my mind, the argument for source separation or curb sorting. And others in the audience have, have mentioned the, the value of source separation in you're providing a cleaner recyclable end product for the would-be buyers. You know, they want folks like turnkey homes just to move in and live into. People that are buying recyclables want a clean product so that they can manufacture and, and not have to reject what they get. And then also, as far as apartment recycling, my friend Stefan Pollard, who many of you may be familiar with, he, his, he was the manager for a number of years of Maple Street Apartments over near the campus where the Frisco Apartments are now. And for his research, for his PhD in environmental dynamics, he conducted multi-family recycling programs that were very successful in the multi-family units that he, the one he managed, and there were, there were two others, I think, in his study. And he has published papers on, on his multi-family recycling program. And a solid waste consulting outfit contracted him for consultation on the multi-family recycling. So I just want to advocate that we keep our present source separation program and look for the opportunities in that. And as involved as I am in the community and, and I am in education and outreach, I was not aware that we had an 80 percent goal by 2025. And I just really think that, I, I listened to the, the phases that were proposed by the Kessler Group, and that, that exact same template, maybe reordering the compostable with the, with the construction waste thing would, would be better. But that exact same phasing can work for what we're doing. And if there's going to have to be education and outreach for single-stream, why don't we just beep up, beef up our education and outreach for the program we have? Because it's a very good one. So with that, I thank you for your time. And I know that we'll be revisiting this again, most likely. But I would just like for all to consider keeping our current curb sort program. Thank you.
Ellen, I see that you're on the speaker. Oh, okay, sorry.
Hello. Hello, Mayor. I'm going to raise this mic, sorry. But, so, I'm Andrea Fournay, and I live at 1214 North Shady Lane here in Fayetteville. And who was, remembers Stefan, who was Ward 1 in 1994? I moved here in 1993.
Stefan Miller.
What was his name?
Stefan Miller, Ward 1.
Yes, I moved here in 1993. We had no recycling. He started the stream, one-stream recycling. Who remembers the big blue bags? Everything went into that bag, everything.
Purple bag.
It was purple.
Pink.
Okay.
I got some of those.
Whatever. You're, you're, so my question is, that was 23 years ago, or 24, or 22. Why are we going back to that? My question, why are we going back to that? Why not, why aren't we? We are the number-one city in the United States for people to want to move to because of cost of living. These people are coming from educated places in our country who already know how to recycle. 1975 UC Davis college student, we recycled blue, green, brown, white glass. Separated it, it was required. That was how many years ago? Why are we going back? This is backwards to me. Granted, there's cost involved, but there's a huge education opportunity here for our, and we have the millenniums that are like going, what are these people talking about? Single-stream, come on. And I don't know if all of you guys are listening, but I really believe that we don't want to go back to single-stream. That's what I say.
Who else would like to address us?
I'm going to have to lower this. Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name's Dana Smith. I'm currently the Environmental Education Specialist for Fayetteville Public Schools. So first, I wanted to thank the city for allowing the school district to participate in the food waste composting pilot program. We had one school that participated, Happy Hollow Elementary. They participated for the whole time period and gave some excellent feedback. The students, teachers, and staff all thoroughly enjoyed doing the food waste composting during the lunch period. It was definitely a learning experience for them, for us, thinking about logistics. And then the students were also able to tour the compost facility at the conclusion of the program, which was a really important environmental education piece for them. And when the compost was completed, eight of our school gardens received finished compost. So they were also very happy to receive that high-quality compost. I did just a little bit of calculation, thinking about this. We had one school that participated in the pilot program. As a school district, we have 15 school sites that provide lunch every school day for approximately 4,100 students. So we are feeding quite a few students. We have done some waste assessments, cafeteria waste assessments, over the years at various schools. So I looked up some of the data on that. And on average, our schools produce about six tons of food waste per school, per year. So if we multiply that by 15 sites, that's approximately 90 tons of food waste that we are generating as a school district. So I just want to present those numbers because I feel like there's a tremendous opportunity there, both in the amount and in educational opportunities for our students to be engaged in helping the city achieve this goal with our waste diversion. And I look forward to working with the city staff as we continue this conversation.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, and council members. My name's Adrian Seanfield. I'm a resident of Ward 3 and a business owner in Ward 1. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Jeff and Brian, and especially the curbside crew. They're amazing to watch. I love being out there in the mornings, and they just fly through that. And it's just really impressive, and I admire their hard work for that. But I'm actually here tonight to talk about the, oh, and I will say that I moved to Fayetteville from Little Rock 12 years ago, and we had single-stream there. And I just, I really appreciate the legitimacy of what we do here in Fayetteville. It's truly recycling, so I appreciate that. But I'm here tonight to talk about the food waste composting aspect of it. I opened a business in May, or April of 2014 with the goal of zero food waste from our kitchen. And we started out composting on-site. That lasted about three months until it just got out of control. The smell, the bugs. My husband just kind of was like, we, you know, we can't do this anymore. So we, we struggled for a while, and then I found a farmer down the street who was willing to come pick it up. So we started with pre-consumer waste, and we were creating about four or five buckets a day. And they came every day. And she spends, she and her husband spend about two hours a day picking up our waste, taking it to their home, turning it. They feed their chickens what they can, they compost the rest of it, washing out the buckets, bringing them back to us. And they're committed to doing that because it's important to them. It saves them money on feed for their, their ducks and their chickens. And it's the right thing to do. We all believe that food is not trash, and it shouldn't ever go into the trash can. And so, we've been doing that ever since, and until the, I was a participant in the, the pilot program. It was wonderful. I highly recommend it, and I'm just here to advocate for that program, please. It was great. I think that it's really important. I also come from a background in hunger relief, and I would like to advocate that for the educational component of it, to really look at the food waste hierarchy and remember that edible food should go to the hunger, hungry before being composted. I think that's an important part of the education process. But actually, just Sunday night, I got a text from my farmer who's been picking up our food waste, because we, we went back to her after we were finished with the pilot program. So we've still been zero food waste. And she just said, I give up. I can't, I can't handle it anymore. I'm tired. I want to go on vacation. I, I want to, you know, have a life. I'm overrun with your food waste in my backyard. So, so Monday, I sent out an email to all my staff. I have 25 staff, and they're college-age mainly, and they're all on board with this. They, they participate. It's a hard job working at my restaurant because not only at the end of the day are you running around waiting tables, making not very, you know, one, $2 in tips every time, but then you have to take all the food waste in buckets out to the curb to be picked up by the farmers, and then we recycle there, too. But my staff are committed to doing it because they know it's the right thing to do. And I believe that more people would be on board with that if they were educated. It just takes some education and some passion from, from us to, to, you know, relay that message to the staff. And everyone's on board now. So I sent out an email saying, you know, we're, we're not able to do it. We're just going to have to throw in the towel and stop, start throwing our food in the trash. And one of my employees said, well, I'll start doing it, you know, because it's important. And actually, luckily today, she's in the audience, we found a farmer that is going to start doing it again. So we're still, we're still doing it. But I just really think that the city, that is a way that the city can reduce a lot of waste. And I'm surprised by the numbers. I feel like they would be higher than that, honestly. But at my tin-table restaurant, we seat 26 people inside. We have seven tables outside with another 22 seats when the weather's nice. We create about 20 gallons of waste a day on a weekday, and about 40 gallons of waste, because we put it in five, five-gallon buckets on the weekends. So that's just my one little restaurant. I just, like Dana was saying, at the school district, I think if you multiply the effect that that would have citywide, getting the food out of our waste stream, it would really be a significant amount. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
When I go to her restaurant, there's no food wasted at all because I clean my plate.
What is the restaurant? A lot of people are asking. Do we have the name of the restaurant?
That's on South School.
Brian Alexander, Fox Hunter Road. First and foremost, you're trying to do the best you can in dirt waste from the landfill, and I get that. You have an 80 percent diversion goal in front of you, established by a council that many of you may not have been sitting on. And you're trying to be good representatives and stewards of that goal, and I get that. You hired consultants to help you figure out how to increase recycling in Fayetteville because you see diverting waste from landfills also saves resources and manufacturing energy of those resources. I applaud you for that. And the consultants did as they were told and, and directed in order to advise you on how to get to 80 percent. The 80 percent is the elephant in the room. But, and this is a mighty big but, you're trying to solve a social problem with an industrial solution. Now, this hasn't been talked about tonight unless I missed it. It's like trying to teach children to be responsible for cleaning their rooms by giving them a hammer and nails. Think about it. You're not teaching those children a darn thing about cleaning their room. And you're having them develop totally different skills. The very purpose of recycling is not to make waste disposal leave the consumer's mind, but to keep it in front of his or her mind, making it part of their consciousness, which translates into waste reduction. In other words, if you see it, you created it, you are responsible for doing something with it that doesn't affect all the rest of us. You've heard many arguments about single spring, single-stream programs numerous times, and there is much more to learn than you've probably learned already. And more than the consultants can furnish you. There are some of us who've got reams of material that has not been asked for. Single-stream is generally criticized for the high rate of contamination inherent in these programs. And that puts single-stream at cross purposes with selling clean, marketable materials that do not have secondary contamination in their bales for the highest price. You've got to keep it clean to get the highest price. Don't forget that. That's part of the hammer and nails. Some of us who've been in this game, and in my case, that's 45 years, have been trying our best to also explain over this whole single-stream discussion that the consequences of single-stream programs run diametrically opposite to the founding principles of recycling. Please understand what I'm saying to you. The recognition of who owns the waste in the first place is what recycling was founded on, and that's what is being ignored with the hammer and the nails. And by the way, it's not the city or our fellow taxpayers who are responsible for our waste. It's us individually. Providing a mixed dumping bin to make it all go away completely obliterates the very foundation of recycling's purpose. And instead turns recycling into just selecting a machine to do for us what we have not been given the incentives to do for ourselves, and paying millions for that machine. given the incentives to do for ourselves and paying millions for that machine. That machine, in this case, is a Murph. You need to understand recycling is a complex process and it's also a professional profession. Not unlike teaching or doctoring or engineering. It involves psychology, sociology, politics, culture, school programs, community pride, being a mayor, et cetera, et cetera. It is not, and I repeat, not, about finding some special machine or someone else to do our job for us. Turning over local control of managing and marketing our recycling stream to large corporate handlers sends resources and jobs out of town. It costs more in money and destroys clean resources and takes great amount of energy. We have become prisoners of machines. 32 years ago, I stood up here and fought an incinerator. What we learned about an incinerator is that you have to feed the beast. It is created by the selling of revenue bonds. I don't know what a Murph would be funded with, but more than likely, it would be revenue bonds, which means you really would have to coordinate an entire region in order to feed the beast because you have to meet those revenue bonds. And diversion in some places, because they need to reach high goals that they have unrealistically set for themselves, can sometimes lead to incineration and they call that diversion. So folks, also, I need to remind you that injuries do happen in everything. I would like to see a comparison in the city's records between the road injury, crew injuries, the landscapers' injuries, the police and the fire injuries, and compare those to the recycling crew injuries. Nobody wants anybody injured. But it happens and I think we should go through everything we can to make it as safe as possible. I think in the last four years, they've had about one major injury on the route per year. Brian could tell us that. Is the city ready for bans and mandatory recycling? Once again, 32 years have gone by. How much readier should we be?
Okay, okay. All right. Who would like to address us next?
Hi, my name's Aubrey. I'm going to, I'm going to go at this at two different aspects, one, personal, and second, in my job. I've been very fortunate to join the Farmer's Table family recently and there's honestly no other restaurant in the world that I would like to work at because of their composting and their recycling and their use of the local farmers. I also work at another table in town that is the complete opposite of that. We throw glass bottles away every day. We don't recycle our cardboard. We trash the food. It breaks my heart. It makes it hard for me to be in the service industry because of that. I've been in the industry for 10 years and, you know, it, the waste, almost everything in a restaurant could be recycled. The food, just like I just listed, everything. Everything we use, napkins, toilet paper, all of it is recyclable. So I think that before we go to something like single stream, we need to really look at the restaurants in our town. We have a lot of restaurants that don't recycle, that don't do everything that they can. And just at that one aspect, we could increase that 18% by a lot, a whole lot. Outside of that, I just recently went to Denver and in a restaurant in Denver, when I went to dump my food, it's kind of a self-serve restaurant, it was all set up for me. There was a spot for the food, there was a spot for the plastic, there was a spot for the glass. None of our restaurants have that and I don't really know why. So that's another thing that we could look at. Education is obviously very important. It's something that's lacking. I myself have not been educated on this. I just recently found out about this whole scenario because of a friend and I'm very thankful for that. Our students unfortunately don't care, a lot of them at the U of A, so maybe we need to create some sort of incentive for them to care, make it more convenient, creating those compartments that, you know, when they're walking by, instead of having a trash can to throw their plastic bottle in, there's a plastic spot, there's a glass spot, there's a paper spot for them along the trails and all across the entire universe, or universe, university. Those are very important. Those things alone would, again, increase that 18% by a lot. A lot of our students are from Texas and I lived in Texas for eight years and I don't think that Texans, a lot of them care about recycling, but how cool would it be if they left our university caring about recycling and went back to their home? It's just, you know, something to think about. Climate change is a real thing and we need to be doing everything we can to educate people and to make this a broader, broader problem that we're tackling. My mom lives in Springdale, which is single stream. My mom, I come from a, unfortunately, uneducated family and I've recently taken on the responsibility of educating myself and watching documentaries and just experiencing life and pondering the situations I'm going through. My mom doesn't use her single stream recycling bin because she doesn't know why she needs to. I have an aunt that lives in Las Vegas who has that same single stream recycling and she called the recycling company and asked them to come pick it up. That should be illegal. I mean, you know, there's, my mom doesn't know why she needs to recycle. She doesn't understand the effect on the climate that it has and on the effects that her, potentially, if I ever have kids, grandkids' lives, you know, the fishless oceans, the direction that we're headed in if we don't make serious changes. So again, I think there are a lot of options that we need to consider before we go to single stream, which is just going to increase our waste as opposed to helping to a better future.
Hi, I'm Garnet Wise. Fayetteville resident for about 10 years. I'm on the Environmental Action Committee, which serves in an advisory role to you all. And so in your packet, you've got a recommendation that the committee put together. I'm not going to read it all or anything, but I'll try to summarize it without going too far off. Basically, we support the, the plan, you know, the whole concept, the 80% goal and trying to, you know, to go to the next step, to continue the process of studying it, to figure out how to get there. There are, you know, there's some reservations or, you know, it's a big, a big goal as we've already addressed. I think if I'm not out of turn, I think the Environmental Action Committee basically supports the, the plan in that we need to turn it over to the city staff now to start doing the work. You know, there'll be a whole series of RFPs and studies and things to figure out feasibilities and cost effectiveness of different options and some options that aren't in the plan. So I think the EAC, you know, supports moving forward, using this as an aspirational goal, you know, to move forward. So I hope I summarized that a little bit, but you've got the report, so please read that. Now, I would like to make some comments just on my own behalf or from myself. I've been in the environmental compliance business for 25 or so years and I've been at, in the, more in the recycling, but I worked for Waste Management Sustainability Services for the past six years. So for the past six years, it's been specifically recycling, landfill diversion, and also regulated waste. But before that, it was environmental management for industrial companies, has waste, air permits, stormwater protection, all that kind of regulatory compliance. So I've got quite a background that I think supports, you know, a lot of observations. So I'm going to, I'll try to, to give you a few observations and apologize, they're not in any particular order, but I'm going to try to address a few things. One, I love Fayetteville, I love our 80% goal. I think it's awesome, but it's, you know, I consider it an aspirational goal and may be one of those we might never get to in our lifetimes, but it's great to have it. If we don't have it, we're never going to make progress. Again, no particular order, but the, the study did determine some, you know, in the pilot of the single stream, for example, automated side loading is way more efficient in collection than the curb sort. There are still other options out there. There's a manual side loader that some communities are starting to do now where basically, so it's in between automatic and, and the curb sort. The reason that's starting to get some traction is because of contamination. Little Rock's an example, where you've got multiple towns in greater Little Rock that are, that are feeding the single stream facility in Little Rock and some towns are noticeably worse than others. And there's several reasons, I'm not going to get into all that, but the concept of manual side loading is the, the operator opens the lid, you know, it's full of dirty diapers, you don't, you don't dump it into your single stream truck. Whereas with automated, you know, it goes in, you don't know what it is. And I've, I've been at that single stream facility and they pull out garbage disposals and patio umbrellas and crazy stuff. So that's contamination. Contamination is stuff that shouldn't be there in the first place and that is a challenge with automated pickup. So you, you gain great efficiency on the collection, but you get contamination. Now, residue, we had to talk about, I think, we tried to address it earlier, but contamination stuff shouldn't be in there in the first place. Residue is, is stuff that through the processing, you end up with residue that's not recyclable. So the glass versus no glass is something that the recycling solid waste department will have to, you know, study out. Fayetteville's one of the few communities, and maybe the only one in North Arkansas that currently does glass. And in single stream, it's a whole, it's a whole challenge because of the residue. The processing cost, if you do go single stream, you can add on some extra expensive equipment on the front end to help separate the glass. All that needs to be weighed out by the city staff during the RFP process and looked at. Let's, a lot of different ways to go there. The, a few notes I just want to mention. We've talked about the society challenges and, you know, we've got that throughout the United States, I know. But in Middle America, one thing that we've got are relatively cheap landfill rates. So east and west coast, you know, we have a lot of examples of what they do in Seattle and San Francisco and New York and various places. Well, their landfill tipping rates are, you know, substantially higher than ours. So the economics are completely different. And then with the value of commodities right now super low, recycling is, is a challenge to make it cost effective for the city. So again, this is going to fall to the city staff to weigh this out. Some of these options may not be feasible in the next few years. The city may, you know, even though we've got an 80% goal, you know, some of this may be in the city's best interest to, to slow down and put it off, wait for the economics to get better. Again, I kind of keep deferring to the city staff because they're the guys that, that are going to need to, you know, do the work to study this out. None of this stuff in the plan is a slam dunk, really. We've talked about C and D being like a big chunk, construction demolition debris. It looks like, oh, there's a, there's a huge percentage of diversion, but we haven't talked about how much that's going to cost per ton. It may be way cheaper to keep landfilling it. Again, that's going to be, the city staff's going to need to weigh that out. Single stream, we have talked about that, you know. Is it going to be a $25 million factor, you know, single stream facility? So the collection efficiency, you know, you've got to balance out the cost of the processing and the facility capital cost. So there's a lot of stuff. None of this is a slam dunk. But again, I support it to send it to the staff to let them, you know, move forward and study. And some of the stuff, we will be able to do, some stuff we may, we, meaning the city, may not be able to do yet. I'll try to not take too long here. Apartment multifamily, we have talked about that. One of the benefits that you'll find in the, in the Kessler Plan is that multifamily and single stream, that's a huge percentage in Fayetteville and they're underserved right now by our current system. So if you do want to make big strides, I think the, looking towards single stream for them is, is going to be beneficial. Public education, we've already talked about that, but the gentleman that was perplexed kind of illustrates the need for public education. You know, the city already does public education and talks about number one and two bottles with the neck smaller than the bottle and yet people still don't get it. You know, they wonder why stuff gets left behind. So it's a challenge. I want to mention another thing, too. We've talked about millennials, we've talked about, you know, college students specifically. There, there are studies out there, and I can't exactly quote them, but we could, we could find references, where their actions are not as idealistic as their, as their talk. And people my age and our age are a lot more conscientious about recycling than younger people are. You wouldn't think it, you know? But there are studies out there that'll show that, and I've seen firsthand, if you've got a trash can here and a recycling can over there, it's all going in the trash can. They're not going to walk 10 extra feet. And so with single stream, one of the benefits there is it removes a barrier, makes it easier. And so that is one of the selling points of single stream, trying to, try to make it easier and remove a barrier to participation. Let's see. I think, I'm going to stop myself. So I just, I guess my point is that personally, I support the plan and moving forward, but nothing in it is a slam dunk, but the, the city staff, I have faith, they've done a lot of work already. They do great work every day and I think that they need to be handed the challenge of, you know, just continuing on and seeing what we can do next for, for the city. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Taylor Bridges. I'm a University of Arkansas student. If we want to increase recycling participation rates, then we need to educate University of Arkansas students. Andrea was right when she said millennials have no idea what single stream is or that the city is even thinking about switching to it. All of my fellow students that I've spoke with about this issue looked at me very confused. Students need to know why it is essential to recycle. A large majority of the tenants of the apartments that we're talking about that don't recycle happen to be college students. And on top of this, there is constantly products that could be recycled in our trash cans at U of A and those that can't be recycled in our recycling containers and they're right beside each other. Students not only need to be shown the statistics about recycling, but also need to be educated on why it is important to sustain Mother Nature. I believe we can increase participation if we can take the blinders off of this, off of my fellow students. We are so caught up in our Facebook feeds, our classes, our bills, et cetera, no wonder waste is overlooked. Also, we don't need to just increase recycling. Students need to be educated on how they can change their habits to decrease their waste, like bringing their own coffee cups to school or using a reusable water bottle. Increasing recycling participation rates that increases landfill waste is an oxymoron that I cannot get behind. Let's increase education instead. That's all.
Who else would like to address this?
Hello, Mayor, I'm David Sager. I'll just be really brief, but I wanted to call attention to two observations tonight. One is that curbside recycling, I saw the, the statistics to read that really there's been no measurable improvement towards meeting the goal over a tenured period of time. And education is important. I for one can't tell you which number of the little triangle, you know, means what. So education is important, but I don't think it's going to be the, the thing that really changes behavior, that really starts to move the, the needle towards achieving that goal. So that's one thing. Something dramatic is going to have to change to, to move the needle. And the other thing is just really ease of use. Capacity in my family, I use two recycle containers. We fill them up in about four days and, you know, the overflow goes into the trash can. I could use probably four to five. know, the overflow goes into the trash can. I could use probably four to five containers this size in a week. So for me, it's capacity. So I'll just leave it right there. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I believe we can get you some more recycling. Don't worry about that. We'll get you whatever you need.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Who else would like to address this?
Louise Mann, 629 Gray Avenue. I've got a couple of questions before I proceed. Are you voting tonight or not?
We're not.
For sure?
Well, I'm not. I mean, it's gonna depend on the council.
I'm asking because my understanding is if we speak tonight, we'll not be allowed to speak in two weeks?
Oh, no, no, you can. If you're here and it's still on the, everybody gets to talk again.
Lionel, I'm hard of hearing. I promise I'm gonna be...
Everybody gets to talk again, all right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Alan, if you say anything, you need to put that mic in front of you. He never does. Okay. Question for Mitch, and I guess you're just creating a list?
Right now.
Oh, okay.
And if I miss anything, I'm sure everybody will point that out to me when I ask the question.
Could we please have the names of these state-of-the-art facilities so we could go online and learn about them? Thank you. Over the past several years, I've found myself in a real uncomfortable position of hearing firsthand from people in the trenches, from different parts of the country, from different segments of the recycling industry. They have confirmed for me what common sense has told us all, and that is that single stream is a mess. I'm in a real awkward spot because all these people are afraid of losing jobs if they speak publicly. So I was elated when Ripple Glass came down from Kansas City and explained what a problem single stream has caused the glass industry. The owner of Ripple Glass, this was back in April, the owner said he had just gotten back from Washington DC where the glass industry had held a meeting. They formed a whole new association just to deal with the problems of single stream. I was so appreciative and I applauded Ripple for having the courage to speak up because I can't find other remanufacturers and end users who will. I've asked several. I love that Fayetteville is supporting a small business like Ripple Glass. 60 people came out that night in April to hear them. I asked specifically that city council members have an opportunity to visit with them. The Ripple reps stayed overnight, and they were very eager to visit with council members. Not one. Not one council person took the opportunity to visit with this small business, these small end users, who had made an eight-hour round trip to tell their story and make themselves available to citizens and council members. This was especially stinging for me as I had to drive back and forth from Memphis, where my older sister was dying of cancer, and I was one of the primary caregivers for her home hospice experience. June was diagnosed in August 2015, and I spent the next nine months driving back and forth to Memphis to help with her hospice experience. And I came back from Memphis to host a trash class that 60 people in this community attended, and only one alderman came to that class, and no one bothered to visit with Ripple that time. You can see it's a sore spot with me. I have some confusions over this plan. But first off, thank you. Thank you for driving down. Again, I didn't know Ripple was gonna be here tonight, but I appreciate that an end user showed up because if you collect materials and they're not made into something new, you're not recycling, and I call it fraud. I have some confusions over the pilot. We were told that we needed to do single stream because we needed to collect in multifamily houses. So I asked for the map to see where the pilot was gonna take place. It took a couple of weeks to get a map, but when I got it, I rode the route and came back and discovered it was all just single family. There wasn't any multifamily in it. Finally, when the multifamily started, this would be apartments, this would be college students, this would be kids who leave in May. Their pilot ran, if I'm correct, from the 5th of April till the 21st of June. To me, that data is skewed. You changed the population during the pilot, but, you know, Brian can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But if one of your main reasons was to address multifamily dwellings, and you knew it was gonna be students, especially if you were doing Frisco, then you knew they were gonna be leaving in May. And so I'm wondering why that pilot started in April rather than February when the single family one started. I got a real problem with that. On plastics, God loves Susan Norton, who has been so patient with all my FOIA requests, I have made four about plastics alone. So, you know, those of you who know me know that senility is gonna be a smooth transition for me. So maybe you've told me and somehow I missed it, but I don't understand what in the world has happened to the three through seven plastics. I saw somewhere that they were sold. Sold to be made into what? I'd like the names of the companies that took three, four, five, six, and seven plastics and what they were made into. We've been through this before. I'm kind of curious how you define recycling. From reading the pilot results, questions on the survey, people seem to think recycling is putting something in a bin. Put something in a bin is putting something in a bin. Recycling is when something gets made into something new. If it's not made into something new, it has not been recycled. So I have a bit of problem with the terminology that's used throughout this pilot report. People are saying, we recycle, we recycle. They don't recycle, they just put stuff in a bin. Recycling happens at the remanufacturers and the end users. Those of you who know my background know I'm adamant about this because I ran a recycling program years ago in the last century, one of the best small-town programs in the nation, community was 7,000 people. We had twice-a-week drop-off, I mean, twice-a-week garbage collection. So consultant said it'll never work. You can't get people to come to a drop-off center. In that early year, we had 65 tons a month, community of 7,000 with twice-a-week garbage. I think Mitch will tell you, that's a pretty good start. The keystone of that program was education. It was not operations. Citizens worked in partnership with the city. And as I left that program, I warned them, if you turn it over to the city entirely, it's gonna get trashed. Cities are overwhelmed with operations of schools, streets, sewers, fire, police. It's not their fault that they can't do all this education, and we should not expect them to. Signal Mountain is a great case study of a program that was wonderful. In that community of 7,000, we had a volunteer corps of 100 people, 30 in the schools every month, 70 rotating at the center. It's a trashed-out little facility today. It's a single-stream drop-off. When they lost focused leadership, they lost the education program. When they lost the education program, it went to an operational program. Single stream is an operational approach to a cultural problem. And I'm real adamant about this because the consultants told me way back when, your program will not work, and it worked very well when education was the keystone. I'm a little bit confused about, and again, senility is gonna be a smooth transition, I admit it, but I am confused about this city memo that says we do not want to have any program that does not allow us to maintain the level of accountability necessary to maintain a credible program. I'm just wondering, has the public seen this memo? Has this been made available to the public? Has the public seen this?
Yes, it has. It's in the agenda packet.
So Stacy got it?
Yes, she did.
All the press got it?
Yes, they did.
Thank you, thank you. And so they got this. So it's a bit confusing because we've spent how many hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then we've got this resolution that says that the staff and administration are concerned that there's not a processing facility. Over here, you've got this list of concerns. I can't tell if the staff is supporting. I guess, Lionel, I need to ask Kit this, and I don't know if you want to answer tonight or next week, but what does the vote mean? What are you voting on? You're voting on this resolution, and what are you voting?
What's the resolution?
Solid Waste Reduction, Diversion, and Recycling Plan, a resolution to adopt the Solid Waste Reduction, Diversion, and Recycling Master Plan is developed by Kessler. What does it mean if you vote yes, and what does it mean if you vote no? And I'm sorry to be so dumb.
Well, it's okay. My understanding is if the council votes yes, then the whole plan is in effect. But that doesn't mean that we're gonna do all the steps.
But what do you...
Yeah, and I drafted that. I drafted that resolution, and I drafted the resolution after reading the chief of staff's memo, which was approved by the mayor, pointing out some problems and concerns they had about this whole study. Now, if study has been presented from staff for the city council's consideration, it doesn't mean that necessarily the chief of staff and the mayor or the council are going to want to adopt all phases of it, all parts of it. And so the resolution was drafted to indicate that there are some concerns, and I would imagine that it's possible the resolution will be amended and talk about various phases, about whether or not they want to adopt all the phases in it. So, you know, we have to get something for the city council, so the resolution's what for the city council, but I do think after all this discussion, there's probably gonna be some discussion among council and about exactly what they want.
So Lionel, do you vote it in and then make the amendments to it, or do you amend it first and then vote?
Well, the council can make amendments to it before we ever vote on it.
Oh, you're sorry.
Yeah, you make the amendments before the vote. You vote on the final decision once the amendments have all been agreed to.
Exactly.
After the amendments have been?
Yes. If you vote for the resolution, it's over at that point. So you amend, make the amendments prior to the final vote.
That's right. Thank you, thank you.
We've seen several amendments to stuff around here before we voted on it.
And Brian can correct this. And again, Susan's been very patient with all my FOIA requests. If I was reading, I'm gonna just put this out there, and then maybe Brian can correct it if I misunderstood, that we were told that we needed to do single stream because of the apartments. So I got a real problem of the time period that was used to do the pilot with the apartments. We were told we needed to do this because of the injuries on the route. And the way I read the chart, it looked like the past four years have been fairly good years with, it averaged, and I think Fran may have gotten this a little wrong. Fran may have gotten something wrong. But it looked, it was, what I saw was one, it was an average of one route injury per year. There may have been one year with zero and one year with two, but that was the past four years. And that, to me, looked like an improvement over previous years. There were a couple of other, let me think. Oh, turnover, turnover. If I read that correctly, and I need to be corrected if I didn't, it looked like in the past three years, in 16, 15, and 14. In 14, there was four turnover. And I can't remember if it was Susan or DeeDee who said, we don't have the turnover record, but we've got the advertising. And so I assume if you're advertising for a position, somebody left a position?
Hang on. Y'all need to answer that?
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay. So we're on the same page. Okay. So it looked like that there were four turnovers in 2014, six turnovers in 2015, and four turnovers in 2016, but I didn't see any for like three or four years prior to that. So was there an equipment change, or did I read something wrong, or?
I don't know. Do you need that?
I mean, if you don't want to answer it tonight, that's okay, but I just want to...
Well, I mean, we can get you that answer.
Okay.
Well, just what we do, the data that we do have was 32 positions in the last six years, 32 postings.
Your mic is...
There we go.
There you go.
I'll actually back here now. The information, data we have for the past six years are 32 postings, which is that's our hiring mechanism. That's our conduit by which we hire into recycling. So that's 5.3 positions per year on average. So again, that's 32 postings in the last six years.
So how many trucks, I'm trying to figure out how many people ride in the route so I can figure out how many route people were having to turn over.
10 positions.
So that's a 50% turnover rate.
Yes.
And so I'm also wondering what has been done to try to make the job easier for the employees? And before you answer that, years ago, I did a lesson plan for Happy Hollow School for Brian, and I remember Brian saying, this is the first time anybody's ever written a lesson plan that takes worker safety or respect for workers, and which was the basis also at Signal Mountain, was respect for workers. So I'm kind of wondering, I don't feel like the citizens have been engaged enough to care about their workers. So, you know, you don't have to answer it tonight again, but I put that question out there. It's what have we done to get the population engaged so they feel a connection, a personal connection, to the guys doing the route, so they want to maybe put all their paper in a sack? And they say, hey, I'm happy to put all the aluminum cans in another sack. When I hear talk of convenience, I have to laugh when I think that there are 2 billion people on this planet who can't get a clean drink of water, and our top concern is convenience.
Could I have the question again, Louise? I'm trying to write as quickly as you.
I'm sorry.
What engagement?
What are we doing to engage people? For example, when I go back to that program back in the last century, you know, we had lessons in every classroom every month, and we didn't ask the teacher to do it. I had been a schoolteacher, so I know what it is. You get to go to the bathroom once a day. So my thought was, and I'm not saying this is how we should do it today, but my point is education was the keystone, continuing education for children and adults. And when people said, I am so glad you're teaching the children, they're the hope of tomorrow, my response always was, what are you, the despair of today? I'm not going to those classrooms because of the children. I've got these 30 volunteers teaching, so they will learn the lessons because they are voting, they are making consumer choices. And this is the last thing, and I'll get out of your hair, but I got a real problem with some of the language that was used in this pilot, especially the word diversion. Waste Dive a couple of weeks ago had an article about communities that were using the word diversion to incinerate. When we set up our goals and our program all that years ago, we didn't use the word diversion. We said we wanted to reduce the volume of waste we were generating because you do not have to divert or recycle waste that you do not create. I'm out of your hair. Thanks, guys.
Okay. If I miss any of the questions, I think I got three, Louise, if I understand. Yes, Rob?
Good evening. I'm Robin Reed with Boston Mountain Solid Waste District. We serve Washington and Madison County. And I'd like to start off by thanking you for supporting the study back in 2013 and continuing to study it. I believe it'll prove to be beneficial to the region as we pursue further waste reduction goals. We support this study and the potential environmental and economic impacts it outlines and hope to further studies for waste diversion options in the future. As has been mentioned many times tonight, we also agree that a strong education and outreach program will be essential when developing whatever programs and services you choose to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this? Okay. Easy enough. Now let me run through these questions. Okay. Let's address as many of Louise's questions as we can since I have that. Okay. How can we begin the study in February instead of, I mean, in April instead of February? Why did we pick that date?
Make sure your microphones are on.
Mitch just mentioned to me that he has all the questions in order, and he's ready to address them.
All right. Well, Mitch, just take right on off.
I was trying to actually remember the start date of the... I was trying to actually remember the start date of the pilot for the multifamily. I believe we did that for three months. I don't think we tried to shorten that up any. So I can look back and try to get you the exact dates of, for when that pilot was done.
The dates were April through June. I think it started later than the curb side, just because it took a little bit longer to get the multifamily complexes onboard. I actually, I realize the tonnage did drop off towards the end of the multifamily pilot. But if anything, that would skew the data downwards, not, it would underestimate the benefit of single stream, not overestimate it. And, but, we sort of felt that made sense because you do have fluctuations throughout the year. You do have times when students are gone and times that they're there. So we did feel that it was a pretty valid representation for the multifamily.
Right. So I just want to confirm. Louise just handed me this piece of paper. It looks like it started on April 5th, ended on June 21st.
Okay. Go ahead, Mitch.
Mayor, I'd be happy to. I tried to take notes on them as we went forward. But the first thing I'd like to say is that I've been in front of many councils and many public meetings in the 32 years I've done this work. But I think the folks out here in this audience really deserve to be acknowledged for the caring and the effort that they're having in the community. And I think a lot of them have done a lot of work and really care about this. It's really, you don't see that in every community. So it's really heartfelt and means a lot.
They're caring people.
So I'm going to try, and this is in the order that people ask the questions. If I'm missing any, Robin could certainly add to that. One of the first things somebody said was, "We need to know what we can recycle." Couldn't agree more. Still up there, the last bullet in the path forward on many slides was education. We believe that whatever you choose, dual stream, single stream, compost, they all require education and outreach and good communication. So we're totally on board with that. Single stream came up quite a bit and a few people asked questions. The first one was, "Single stream versus dual stream?" Well, the data that we talked about and the data we saw in your program nationally would suggest that when you convert a dual stream program to a single stream program, you basically double the tonnage. Is it my opinion? No. What's in the literature, it's all over. The community I live in is about 650,000 people in the county. They doubled their tonnage two years ago when they converted. That's what happens. We talked about the communication, but, you know, that's really the issue. And there's plenty of literature to talk about that. I'll just throw at you some facts about programs. There's no program in the United States that I'm aware of, there might be one out there, that has a population of over 50,000 people that's diverting, recycling, whichever word you want to use, 50% or more that isn't single stream. So it depends what your goal is. You know, if you're comfortable in that 20, 25% range, you could keep the status quo here. You will not get, whereas any program in the United States got to over 50% with a dual stream program. So that's just something for you to think about. Again, not just a fact, 75% of the urban population in the United States is served by single stream programs. Now, this is again addressing some of those single stream issues. I'm going to talk about some of the things I don't think is good about single stream tends to some of the questions as we go forward. There was a woman who brought up a great point about why are we going backwards? And I would hold out, as somebody who was doing recycling in the 70s, that if you look at it historically, in the 70s, it was newspaper only. That's what people were doing. It was newspaper. You may have done some cans, but nobody was doing plastics, or very few plastics. Very few people were doing glass. In the 80s, what became popular, and there was very little diversion, very little recycling enter Earth Day in 1970. In the 80s, we moved to a five bin system. Many communities who were starting programs that the EPA kind of put in place were five different bins, metals, plastic, paper, et cetera, et cetera. In the 90s, we went to what we're calling dual stream, in these two bin systems. In this decade, in the last 15, 20 years, we've moved towards single stream. Not judging, just the facts of our industry of where things have gone for better or worse. I don't think it's going backwards. I wasn't here in your community when you did this bag-based program, but there are many problems with bag-based programs. It's not like your purple bag program, put a lot of material in it, and then probably have very high contamination, try to figure out what to do with it before there was technology to deal with it. And I will talk about the technology issue that came up. All I can tell you is that single stream equipment, and there are people here in this room who I know are going to talk about that the next time you have a meeting, has drastically changed in the last 20 years. So some of the older facilities we talked about are filled with flaws. We did a call to the five major equipment manufacturers who manufacture and install recycling equipment. And out of those five companies, what they said to us was simple. Almost all MRFs that they have sold in the last five years are single stream. Is that good news? I don't know. There's some downsides to that, but that's what's being put in place. That's what's happening in communities. And we'll talk about some of the downside. One of the people made a great point. If it's not broke, don't fix it. Advocating keeping the system in more of that status quo as it is. I agree with that. I totally agree with that. If you're comfortable with that 25% objective. So if that's working, you should stay with it. As far as testing of the material, the testing of what's happening in MRFs, there's a performance test we're actually doing next week for one of our clients in the Panhandle of Florida. The equipment manufacturers, not our opinion, but the guarantees they're putting in place is that the equipment will process and get 95% of the material out. I'll be happy to send staff the performance test that's being written and what's being met. That's the modern equipment. I don't make equipment. We don't sell equipment. I'm just letting you know what's out there. Verma compost, a great topic, really cool stuff. I actually do composting at our office. We do composting at my home. We've worked on composting projects all over the country. It's one of the coolest things going, to see little red worms wiggling around in the food waste is great. You will get some people wanting to do that in their backyard. You will have people who want to do that at school programs. Most people don't want to mess with worms. Simple as that. Maybe in Fayetteville, it's different. It would be great. I'm a big advocate of verma composting. I appreciate the person who brought that up. Mary's book is one of the best books out there, and it's great that it's being updated. Maybe Robin could address. Somebody talked about the 18 to 26% and how that, they weren't understanding how that phasing fit in. You want to hit?
Sure. You know, the way we modeled this, and I said this earlier, it's phased in over a period of time. So the 26% doesn't mean at that point in time, you're getting all the organics and all the recyclables that you can get. It's being phased in, and the program continues to grow because change doesn't happen overnight, as we all know too well. And as you know, over the past 10 years. So that's not to say that you're only going to get to 26% by implementing single stream and composting. That's what our prediction is, and it's a conservative prediction that you can do in the next three years. As I mentioned before, the Phase 2 in the next two years, that's not just C and D, it's by continuing to grow both the recycling and the composting program over the next two years to get to 40% as well as adding in C and D degree. So I think that's what's been confusing to people because they don't see that little, you know, 8% bump up as being enough for increasing recycling and organics. And it's not. But it's a phased-in program that continues on through future phases of the project.
Great. Sarah from Ripple Glass, I don't know if she's still here, but it was great that she was here. I would say that single stream, historically handling of glass, has been horrible. Why? Because the processing companies, the, I won't name company names, but the people who proposed these single stream plants and built them, what they thought the answer was, was crush the glass up front, let it drop through a two-inch in under screen and go on a lower belt that basically went out with residue. That was a really bad idea. So the older plants have those systems in it. Today, as I talked about with newer equipment, now you're seeing plants built with optics and ballistic air classification. And if you talk to some of the larger companies, and I'll address the Ripple piece in a bit, but Strategic is one of the largest glass benefication facilities in the country, they'll tell you that if there's certain equipment in a modern single stream plant, they'll guarantee to take that glass. Why? Because now it's getting out the contaminants. I met with Michelle Goff. I don't know how she fits into Ripple. I think she's pretty senior in the company at a conference recently. I asked her, "What's your position on single stream?" And she said, "It's simple. We prefer segregated, clean glass." That makes sense. It's better to have clean, segregated material. However, I said, "Well, how are you going to keep supplying your plants?" She said, "Well, we'll take single stream glass, and she has to meet our standard." I said, "What is your standard?" She said, "10% or less contamination, or they won't accept the glass." The new plants meet that specification. So I agree, separated glass is better. I agree separated aluminum, paper, or any material is a better, cleaner way to do it. You're not going to get the high tonnages that we talked about that would demonstrate. Somebody brought up deposit legislation and bottle bills. I think personally, they're great. I also think you're not going to see one passed in the state of Arkansas. I think that what's happening with deposit legislation around the country is there's battles just to keep that legislation intact in the states that have it. We get some of the highest percent of clean materials in bottle bill states of anywhere in the country. The aluminum's cleaner, the plastic's cleaner, and the glass is cleaner. They make sense. It's not something that has been introduced anywhere in the country in recent years, and no one's even come close to passing deposit legislation in a state, you know, I don't know, 15, 20 years. So I think they're a great idea. They make sense. The person also brought up swap and exchange. That's a fantastic way to reuse stuff. Whatever option you pick, we would strongly suggest that you have a swap shop, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Sauce separation, somebody brought up.
Can I just add to that, too? And it is in the plan. In the plan, we do include recommendations for the city's role in encouraging reuse, working a lot with existing organizations in your community, both for reuse programs as well as, the other thing that was mentioned, was food going to feed people before composting, and that's also in the plan.
A few people mentioned your existing program. And, you know, we've told staff, we've met with them, we think you have a really good program. It's just, are you going to get the numbers any higher? That's the fundamental policy question that you have to grapple with. Sauce separation, somebody brought it again. I'm going to repeat, we think makes a lot of sense. You just don't get the tons and you don't get the participation. I'm going to address that a little later on some of both Fran and Louise's comments. Education, a number of people kept bringing up, education is the key. We agree. You've heard us say that time and time again, so I won't belabor that. I mentioned that your '93 program. I want to address a few things Fran brought up with, which I, you know, I really agree with, that what she said, which is, and Fran and I have talked about this at previous meetings, that this is a social problem that requires individual solutions. The problem is, our society doesn't like that anymore. We pick up a phone and we talk to somebody called Siri to get all our answers. Well, there's a whole bunch of conveniences to that, but it's certainly getting away from the day of looking at somebody and having a direct conversation. It's getting away from the day of writing a letter to somebody. It has to be instant answers and instant gratification. And is single stream leading in that direction? Yes. Do I like it? No. I'm kind of like an old hippie guy. I like a lot of stuff that went on in the 70s. But we've moved away from that. I don't control that. I just did a eulogy at my aunt's funeral, who was 93 last week. And one of the things that I said at that was, "My aunt worked at Western Union." And I said, "In the day she was there, you communicated to people by sending information, when necessary, by a telegram." Because many people don't know what a telegram is anymore. And I use that Siri example. My aunt wrote birthday cards. She wrote letters. She communicated directly. She didn't have a cell phone, and she didn't have the internet. And she did just fine. I think part of what Fran and Louise are talking about is that kind of communication, that kind of outreach in a community. I think it's ideal. I think it would be the way to live life if we could do it that way. I don't control the direction of Siri and the things like that. But people want fast, quick results and convenience. That's different than education. You could educate, but to get people to do the very things Fran and Louise are talking about is wonderful. I'm not sure how far we could get with that. If you could do it in this community, I'd applaud you, and I'd be interested in moving here. So, there's a lot to be said for that. So, it is a social problem, and I ideally agree with Fran. I would say that, to take it a step further, they talked about single stream, a number of people mentioned the problems with that. Let's take it a step further, talk about mixed waste processing. Mixed waste processing is taking one bin with garbage in it and bringing it to plants and separating it out. I'm not even going to judge the ups and downs of that. You can imagine if you don't have, if you have concerns about single stream, mixed waste would be off the charts. But many of the communities that are in high-performing programs, such as San Jose, San Francisco, are doing some form of mixed waste processing. So if people do want it convenient, they do want it easy, for better or worse. Individual responsibility is the root of recycling. Fran brought that up. I couldn't agree more. That's how it started. How to keep it going? A lot of people in this community seem to want to do that. I applaud that effort. I just don't know what kind of participation you get. We are prisoners of the machines. Louise brought, I'm sorry, Fran brought that up, and I think I've addressed a bit about that. There is no fool, people brought up the single stream contamination, problems with single stream. There is no foolproof solution to single stream contamination. It will require education, and it will require constant communication. And you also would need a modern facility. If you're not willing to communicate and educate and have a modern facility, single stream is not the right thing for this community at all, or for any community, because that's what it requires. Louise asked about the name of some of the state-of-the-art facilities. We'll be happy to provide those. We don't promote those facilities, but we'll tell you the communities where they are. We'll give you examples of small, medium, and large communities that have high participation, high recovery rates, and low contamination. And you could judge those and call those yourself. Also, Fran asked about 3-7s. We don't sell material, but we will get you a list of companies that accept 3-7 plastics and products that are made out of 3-7 plastics. So again, you could judge that on your own. Fran brought up, and I appreciate it, I spent four years of my life living in New England, a community of 7,000 that Fran exemplified. And, you know, basically what people do there, you spend Saturday at the dump. That was the place to hang out. Gossip, dating, picking up things that other people were discarding, we're all done Saturday at the dump. It's a New England tradition. It makes a lot of sense. Historically, and if you look at the information, small communities works great. And you get to 80,000 people much harder. What are people doing on Saturdays here? They're taking their kids somewhere. They're running to a game. Their, people are busy. It's a world of convenience. But I'm a big believer in small communities and drop-offs working and working well. I do think Fran is right. Single stream is the 21st century quick fix, be it like it or not. That's what people are looking for, is convenience. In the survey information, convenience, convenience, convenience kept coming up out of the 288 people who responded to the survey. I'll just leave it with education is the cornerstone. Fran talked about that. Diversion doesn't equal recycling, and waste energy is not recycling, Fran stated. I totally agree with that. I live in the state that's the most egregious offender of that concept. In the state of Florida, waste to energy, every ton that you put in the waste energy plant where you're burning material and converting it to energy counts as recycling credit. So we have county after county in our state that says, "Oh, we're 80% recycling plus." They're not recycling. So there's a lot of sham numbers out there. There's a lot of misinformation. I think I covered, Robin, anything you could think of that I may have missed? I tried to go down the list and take notes as people were going. Anything you could think of? So hopefully I addressed them there. We may have missed some, but happy to answer any questions that council members have. And again, appreciate the community's comments. It was fantastic.
Okay.
Now, I would like to address, I know, on the resolution. Now, this resolution is the plan. Now, that plan can be modified. If City Councilmember wants to amend it, brain different, not pass any of it, pass sections of it, this is where you all come into play. I know the Councilmember Latur said that he wants to talk about the single stream recycling by itself totally, if I understand it. They contacted the city attorney to look at that. You know, there's, you know, implementations of hiring extra people, staff to enforce the collections and what people put in their cans. Y'all can pass that or not pass that. This is going to be entirely up to what you want to do. And whatever you all pass, this administration will adhere to, like all these other things that we look at. So, whatever amendments you want to put on it, I'm good with that. If you don't want to put any, that's your call to make. I have a few concerns that's been addressed in the letter that we sent out. I have concern about contamination, I do. I have concerns that I don't know of a market that we have for three-through-sevens. I have concerns about that. So, you know, I just don't know. A Murph, that thing's going to cost about $3 million if you want to put one together. Do I miss that much?
I think one of the things we throw out on a Murph would be depending on what type of facility, and if the private sector funds that and brings another tonnage, or you do it yourself.
I saw some number of three, three and a half million for a mini Murph or whatever.
Yeah, that's, yes.
So, I have some concerns about cost, because it gets back to what we can afford. So, that's what you all face right now. So, okay, Alan, I see you're on the.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start with a really interesting fact that I heard yesterday. It's from the Container Recycling Institute. Someone mentioned them tonight, can't remember who that was. It was in 2014, only 28% of plastic water bottles were recycled. 59 billion in total, plastic water bottles were not recycled. I'm sorry, out of 59 to, 59 billion total, over 42 billion were not recycled. And that's up from a number of, a total of 2.8 billion purchased in 1996, so there's a huge increase there. I think what we're doing in this community with our curb side, curb sort program is exactly what communities should be doing in keeping the recycling local. And I think Fran said it really well tonight. It's our problem, it's not someone else's problem. And someone by the name of Neil Seldman last night, he is with the Institute of Local Reliance, talked about centralization of capital, too, and how that flows out from your community, and the value that you can find in recycling within your community, and what you can do with that yourselves. And I think that that's something also that is very important. I mean, there's so many things we need to look at as a city, but I think you can always take it back to, if you keep it clean, you keep your markets, and that's very, very important. As a buyer myself, that's, that's what I do for, as my day job. I look for quality. So, as an alderman, I want to make sure that we keep our commodities and we keep our markets. And I also want to make sure that we keep the transparency and the control in our local community that we have right now, because that's very important. When I look at the one vote that I regret since being, since being elected in 2012, I guess taking office in 2013, it's voting for this study. It's voting to spend over $300,000 on it, because I think if we had spent half of that money on education, we would already be way up toward our goal right now. So, I'm disappointed in myself for that, and that's something that I will freely admit. Mitch, I appreciate the work that y'all do, but I just, I see that in our community and the interest that we've seen here tonight. We've talked about this for over two hours. I think that if we put half of that into education, we would have a really big program tonight. I did not expect to see this many people show up, but I'm really excited that, that we did. And with all that community engagement we've had tonight, I do want to go ahead and vote on this. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to vote on this resolution.
Well, I have a motion on the.
Your motion is to pass the resolution, is that what it is? So, you're like, you're making a motion for an immediate vote?
I can make it a motion to pass it if I need to, but.
Well, I'm just trying to understand your motion, what, you know, if you make a motion for immediate vote, that's a two-thirds requirement?
I'll make a motion to pass it.
Okay. That's just a straight, normal, normal resolution, okay.
What about all the, that takes precedent over everybody that wants to speak?
No, no, it doesn't. I'd a motion to table is a higher priority motion, and would, usually, it's, it's when there's already another motion on the floor, that's when you table it.
Oh, okay, all right. Justin.
So, we're going through this.
Yeah, well, let's, let's go through this. Do we? Okay, go ahead.
I'm just doing what you tell me to do.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
Mayor, for our rules of order, do we have a second on the motion?
Okay, do we have a second on the motion to vote tonight?
No, it's, no, they're not, it's not a motion to vote tonight, it's a motion to pass the resolution.
I was up next, anyway.
Okay, I, what is the?
That's just our standard, regular motion, just to pass the resolution.
Oh, okay.
And so, that would need a second?
Which I just did.
Okay, so at this point.
So, there we go.
You don't have to call a roll or anything, plenty of discussion, you can have a motion to table also.
Okay. All right, now, Justin, let's.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm not convinced that, that, and maybe I will be someday, that, that our aspirational goal, or any goal for that matter, is going to be improved greatly by going to single stream. I do believe, I think as everybody does, that education is, is a key factor, and if, if anything, that these consultants have, have probably shed that light as bright as anything. And with our fine people here that are promoting this event, I think more and more people will learn about it. And I do think the university is key, and education is key. But that doesn't mean that we force everybody to go to single stream tonight. And any amount of amendments to a bad idea is still amending what I believe to be a bad idea. It doesn't mean that we can't take some of the pieces of it later and create a new idea, but the overall idea of single stream I don't agree with. I would be against the majority of my constituents if I voted for this tonight or two weeks from tonight. And that's not just the people that came to the microphone, which was a majority of people. Some are my constituents, most of them are not. Most of my constituents I've talked to privately, or I've talked to via phone conversations or something, and they don't like it either. And they are perfectly capable of knowing what is best for them without me telling them what's best for them in some cases. And I do believe that there is a tremendous amount of people in East Fayetteville that recycle. I know everyone does in my neighborhood. Everyone does in the three neighborhoods surrounding me. And I, I believe that just because we say, "Now, it's easier to do it this way," I'm still not convinced that the market bears a reward that is worth doing this right now to our citizens. And to say that the, the facility might cost $3 million or $4 million, that doesn't make me feel any more comfortable either. We've said a lot of things, we're going to cost a certain amount of money in this room, and it's ended up costing more. And another thing that bothers me tremendously about this whole idea is, is that we're, we're standing here talking about something, and someone said, I believe it was the gentleman from the Environmental Action Committee, and said, "Well, let's just do this, and then we'll let the city staff figure it out." The city staff are, are very intelligent, hardworking people, but we hear all the time up here how busy they are. For me to throw a huge thing like this on their laps and go, "Go figure out the little bits and pieces of it, okay? We've done this, so enjoy, enjoy your time." That's not fair to them. And so, it's not that this is a bad idea, and certainly recycling is very, very important. And I guess I'm dealing with a different piece of the generation than was mentioned earlier, but, I mean, the, the kids I know wouldn't dream of not recycling right now. They just don't, they don't even know what it is not to do it. My son wouldn't throw a plastic bottle in the trash can if his life depended on it, because he knows he'd turn around and we'd go, "What are you doing?" But he doesn't even do that, he doesn't even think about it, because it's embedded in his system. So, I have a little more faith than that. And maybe it's short-sighted, and maybe I'm being naïve, that's understandable argument. But two weeks from tonight is not going to change my mind. And all the people that spoke here tonight are going to be the people that speak again. It's not that I don't love seeing them, but I think I heard their points, and they were good ones. So, I'm ready to vote tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I just ask a question first? What's our annual budget for education in this arena?
$120,000.
How long have we been doing that?
About three years.
So, we've spent more on education than we have the study?
I'm sorry, what's that?
We've spent more on education in the last three years than we have on this study?
Uh, roughly the same, yes.
Yeah, okay. In any case, a little bit about my background. Before I was elected to this position, I ran a little no-name nonprofit so that I had, so that I could call the work I was doing something. And one of the things I did was I partnered with the Fayetteville School Districts to design the Green Team Program, which put recycling in most of the classrooms in the school district. You know, I confess, I didn't walk the bins to the classrooms. I really only interfaced with, with a couple of teachers and their students. I wasn't in every classroom, but, but it was something that I helped do, and something that I'm proud of. Then I went on, and I had a friend that was working with the university, and one of the things that, that I volunteered to do with him was go to the tailgating parties at the university parking lots and try to get people to recycle. And we would actually tag the bags with optical codes so that we could do bin tracking and tell which groups of people were more respondent to our messages, and which volunteers were doing better work, and so we could refine our, our messages with one another. And I, I tell you this because I want to communicate that, first off, I guess I'm a believer. I'm an, I'm an advocate for, for recycling, and I, and I've been, certainly, I've not made a career out of it, but I have spent a little bit of time in the trenches of trying to educate people and, and actually do some of the work. And it's hard, and anybody who makes a career out of it really deserves, I think, accolades, if not the feeling of fulfillment. So, I'm a little surprised, I guess, at the tone of the discussion tonight, because it, it seems like there are some people here who think that there's a, a fight to be had, even though we're all on the same team, even though we all look at that 18% number and think it should be higher. You know, I, I think up until the point when we had the, the resolution, which at the time we called a moonshot resolution, because we knew it was aspirational, which there were seven members of the council today that were there whenever we did the resolution. Whenever we did that, we knew that we were going to get a, a plan back that had a lot of unknowns in it, but that was more or less a roadmap. And until we did that resolution, I call our approach before then the ostrich strategy, the ostrich strategy, because we never talked about that number, ever. The number we talked about was a 67% participation rate. We said 67% of our homeowners recycle, and we wore that like a badge of honor. And I'd be willing to bet that almost everybody here tonight that is defending the curbside program lives in a single-family house. I do, and I have for more than a decade now, and I've recycled ever since. But there is about 40% of our community, which by the way, is not just students, that don't have the opportunity to recycle unless they're going to get in a car and drive somewhere to a drop-off location. And so, I called what we were doing before the ostrich strategy, because we really had our head buried in the sand about, about how good we were about recycling by our own standards. And I think today, we all know, no matter what you think about single stream, or how focused you've been on that, that we believe that we should be doing better than that number. And so, we could throw single stream out, and there's still major improvements left in the plan to that number. So, I don't understand why somebody would take a baby-out-with-a-bathwater approach to the plan we have in front of us, even if you didn't believe anything, any of the counter-arguments, and support a single stream tonight. So, I, I'm very surprised that we're taking an all-or-nothing approach, because that's not usually what we do. We're usually more interested in the nuts and bolts of our decisions than we are in the ideologies. And so, I'm, I'm surprised, and, you know, I would say if we are, you know, if we're going to vote tonight, okay, well, then that's that. But I think a much better approach would be to continue this discussion in a forum where things can be discussed in detail. Probably not in two weeks. It's probably going to take longer than that to, to work through a lot of these concerns. You know, the memo that prefaced this agenda item that the Chief of Staff wrote, I thought was one of the, it's something we should all pay attention to, because that's really how what we do moving forward needs to be set up. Of course, there are these concerns, and what we're supposed to do is have answers to them, not say, "We don't know, so kill it." We should say, "We don't know, so let's find out. Let's be enlightened about it. Let's, let's get the answers, because it's the right thing to do." If we need to revise the goal, we should revise the goal. If we need to look at other options, other examples, we should look at other options. If we need to wait 10 years before reconsider, because that's when the robotics technology is going to be that great, then we should do that. But what we shouldn't do is just throw our hands up in the air and say, "Well, to heck with everything that's in the report, because we've been so focused on a third of it." So, in any case, after everybody said their piece, you know, I, I hope that we will table it. I hope we'll table it for long enough that we'll give people time to digest the information in it, not just the folks who are attuned to it, like those who are in this room. And I hope that we'll give it long enough that we can bring our consultants back, and that we don't try to force an unrealistic timeline on, on adopting this. And if we need to look at it as, at it as a kit of parts, that's exactly what we should do.
Okay. Sarah.
Thank you. I'd like to start by telling you a little bit about my background. I am a Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design accredited professional through the U.S. Green Building Council. I've maintained that certification since 2006, so that's a little over two year, or 10 years. I specialized in construction waste management planning for very large construction projects, as well as waste management planning for existing buildings, these are large building complexes. Former Chair of the Green Economy Group, actually, I'm former Chair of the Green Party of Arkansas, so I've got some pretty deep green credentials. And I strongly support this plan. I think it is very good for our community. The public comment that I've heard from the people who were involved in the pilot program showed overwhelmingly excitement about it, increased participation. And what really struck me was that it was more age and ability friendly. There are a lot of elderly and disabled people who live in my ward, and they were actually able to get their bins out to the curb, which was a great change and allowed them to participate. And we asked, "Well, can't we get different bins?" Well, that comes down to the ergonomics of the workers and the trucks. You know, we talk about safety, and worker safety is huge for me. And I think what really, if I ever had any doubts about this, there was one day, we were having a severe thunderstorm alert. I'd just gotten the phone, the phone call from the mayor. It's hailing outside, and I look outside, and there is a recycling worker sorting my recyclables at the curb. And the difference between the single stream and the curb sort program that we have now is that the program we have now forces our workers to sort the trash or the recyclables at the curb in 100-degree weather with humidity, or in sub-freezing temperatures through rain, through thunderstorms. This is an unacceptable condition for our workforce, and it is just a matter of time before one of them is hit by a vehicle. I think about the office complex that I rent out. There are six artist studios and music venue and several therapists. And we are not able to recycle, because even if we put all of those bins at the curb, then there's someone standing at the corner of MLK in all that traffic, sorting out nine different recycling bins. Whereas with the single stream, they take that to a factory that is, has ergonomic workstations, has protection from the elements, from the hot, the cold, the weather, and they have the opportunity to wear safety gear and to use modern technology to help sort this, this recycling product. For me, from a worker safety position, that is a no-brainer. I also think about the thousands of apartment units in my ward. And even if those young people wanted to recycle, they do not have recycling services. They are not going to get in a vehicle and drive. And think about the environmental efficiency of every individual in those apartment buildings putting their recyclables in their car and driving to a drop-off station. Just the incredible fuel inefficiencies of that, as well as the wasted time, the extra traffic. And, you know, quite frankly, as a person who works multiple jobs, if I have to drive my recycling somewhere, I'm not going to do it. And so, all the education in the world is not going to help us do this. You know, we're looking at a huge change in demographics right now, and we are moving away from single-family homes in the suburbs to more compact living, whether that's the young people who are putting off child rearing, or, you know, still in school, or empty nest... young people who are putting off child rearing, or, you know, still in school, or empty nesters who kids have moved away and they're wanting to live closer where they can walk places. They're living in condos, they're living in apartments. These buildings types are not easily served with our curb sort program. It's impossible. I had heard earlier about the Mill District. My boyfriend has an office there, and their recycling program, and how everyone in the building is supposed to go down there and sort their recycling into the different bins. And it's a maintenance nightmare at that building. And as a consequence, people in his office are not recycling, because it's too difficult, because the bins are a mess outside. So it's not an effective way to recycle for the way that demographics are changing and the changing needs of our residents. You know, it's, I've lived in many cities. I've lived with our current curb sort system. I've experienced dual stream. I've lived in single-stream facilities. I've lived in cities where we refined if we put recyclables in our trash, or if we put food waste in our trash. And you know what? You just didn't put it in your trash. It was pretty simple. And, you know, it was added incentive to go ahead and wash out the old spaghetti sauce jar you found molding in the back of your refrigerator instead of putting that in the bin. And so these, I think those are all really important tools for us to achieve these waste diversion goals. And I use the word diversion because these are resources that do not belong in our landfill. And yes, recycling is what happens to most of these, but diversion is also salvage, it's repurposing, it's swap shops. There are a lot of ways to divert waste. But you'll also, the most important, I think, is reducing waste, which we need to do a better job doing. And when we stopped collecting threes through fives, I stopped eating yogurt and hummus because I did not want those tubs not being recycled. And so I think that there's a lot of consumer education and choices that we make every day to reduce waste. But ultimately, I've read this report many times, front to back. I think that the assumptions that they made were quite conservative, the methodology that they used was very sound and very thorough, and I have a great deal of confidence in its findings, and I will strongly support adoption of this document. I do hope we don't vote tonight, because the chair of our water sewer solid waste committee was unable to be here, and he's been the one spearheading this project. I think he has, I think it would be the right thing to do, to wait until he was able to be here to vote. But I think we've got a great plan here, and I have confidence in our staff to work out the details. But like anything, this is just a plan. And, you know, we think about our 2030 plan. We adopted that plan, but every decision that we make has to support that plan. And as you saw here tonight, it was easily thrown out the window in favor of a different decision. So when it comes right down to it, and we have firm numbers about, you know, the actual cost of the single-stream facility or the chain of custody concerns, when we actually have the details on that, we will make those decisions one at a time with public notice, with public input. So I have confidence in the process that we're going to do this right. But with that, I do strongly support this plan. Thank you.
Okay. Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Kit. I'd like to make a motion, but it's not one that I've made before. I'd like to table this indefinitely in a way that it doesn't fall off of the table at the end of the year. My intention here is to give, impart enough flexibility in my motion that the water and sewer community will have a chance to review this, and I'll explain why if I can make this motion and find a date in the future when Kessler can return.
Well, you do need to make a date specific, or it'll automatically be denied on December 31st. So you would just, if you want to make it like for the second meeting in January, if you're not, if they're not ready to go then, it can always be tabled again at that point in time. But, you know, our rule state that if you have, if there is some item that has been tabled indefinitely, and it's not removed from the table by December 31st, then it is over. Doesn't mean it couldn't be brought back up, a new resolution, which obviously could be done. But if you want to maintain this as it is right now, and that probably would be better for our clerk, I think, so he wouldn't have to redo everything all over again, then I would make it to a date certain.
Okay. I'm gonna, okay, then I move that we table this until the second meeting in February. And I'm making this motion because, number one, our water and sewer chair isn't here. That's really the water sewer and solid waste committee. I think that pursuant to the memo from the chief of staff where there are some timeline concerns based on what's in the plan, and some concerns maybe with procedurally how we would go about implementing some of these things if this plan were to be adopted, I would like to suggest that the water and sewer community committee get into the details of this and maybe bring us back, an amended version that addresses, that includes a timeline that everybody can agree is, you know, reasonable, and addresses some of the other concerns in the memo. So the second date of February, and I'd also, you know, like to state my opinion that I think that our consultants should be involved in that process. So if the date needs to be pushed further than that, I would support it.
Okay. Adella.
I would like to second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to table till the second meeting in February. Am I correct?
Yes, Mayor.
That's correct.
Okay. What discussion do we have on that? Do we vote on the first one first, Kit?
You vote on the motion to table, and, you know, one thing that you all can consider is that you spent $300,000 for this report, and it has some things in there that I am very concerned about, as I wrote my memo to you all today. I don't like the mandates and the bans, but there's a lot of good stuff in this in-depth study, too. So you might want to look at it in pieces and not adopt everything or not reject everything. And I think, so that's just my two cents on it.
I think that would be my two cents as well. I think there's parts of this plan that are good. I think the food waste program's good. There's some stuff in there that's very good. I mean, if we totally voted down, I guess we can bring back something later. So I think that will be, I would, I think the tabling would be a good thing, but I will leave that up to you all's wisdom here. All right. Any other comments on that? Let's go first on the table. All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tynna.
My vote screen's not up.
No.
Tommar. Lutcher. Long.
No.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Mayor, there's three of three votes, so you can choose to vote if you want to pass the motion to table.
Can?
Yes, you can.
I will.
Okay, the motion table then passed.
All right. Okay. Now I got me a quorum, right? All right. Let's move along to the next item.
Thank you. There's so much good stuff in this plan.
Okay. Let me make sure I've got the right spot. An ordinance to rezonate property described in zoning petition RZN 16-5624 for approximately 8.95 acres located at southwest corner of Greg Avenue and Drake Street from RMF 24 residential multifamily, 24 units per acre to CS Community Services. Kit.
Just one second. I was trying to get to Andrea Fornese, but I was a little bit ahead of myself. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of property shown on the map, Exhibit A, and illegal description, Exhibit B, both attached to the planning department's agenda memo, from RMF 24 residential multifamily, 24 units per acre to CS Community Services. Section 2, the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby men's official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Okay. Andrea.
Sir, this property is at the southwest corner of Greg and Drake Street. It's about nine acres. It's undeveloped. There is an apartment complex to the south. The property also has access onto the road quality lane. Proposal is to rezonate the property from multifamily to CS Community Services, which is a form-based. Zoning district applicant has indicated a desire to develop the property with a mix of different uses, and staff recommends in favor of the request. The future land use plan does show this area as city neighborhood, and we feel like the request is in line with the land use policies and goals, and also would be compatible with the surrounding mix of multifamily. Then the university farm is to the west, so we're recommending approval. The planning commission also recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you.
Okay. Is the African here?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Ramsey Ball. I'm with Coggers International, and I represent this application today and seek your support for it. We think it's good land use, it's a great zoning. I think the comment from the city that was, it was the highly appropriate zoning for the property, and can answer any questions you might have now or later.
Do we have any questions? I think they're about questioned out. Okay. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council. Alan.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the second reading. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tynna.
Yes.
Tommar.
Yeah.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance to rezonate that property described in rezoning petition RZN 16-5624 for approximately 8.95 acres located at southwest corner of Greg Avenue and Drake Street from RMF 24 residential multifamily, 24 units per acre to Community Services.
Adella.
I move that we go to the third and final reading.
Sarah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tynna.
Yes.
Tommar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh. Yes.
An ordinance to rezonate that property described in rezoning petition RZN 16-5624 for approximately nine acres located at southwest corner of Greg Avenue and Drake Street from RMF 24 residential multifamily, 24 units per acre to Community Services.
Okay. Any final comments in the council on this? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty.
Yes.
Tynna.
Yes.
Tommar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh. Yes.
Okay. Number seven, an ordinance to approve vacation 16-5582 submitted by Andrea Fornese to vacate the unbuilt Pike Street right-of-way between Highland and Pollard Avenue.
Whereas, the city council has the authority under ACA 1454104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the city council has determined the following described, unbuilt street right-of-way is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates the unbuilt Pike Street right-of-way between Highland and Pollard Avenues as described in Exhibit B attached to the planning department's memo. Section 2, a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with the map attached as Exhibit A to the planning department's memo, shall be filed in the office of the Washington County Circuit Clerk. Section 3, this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions. Number one, any relocation or damage to utilities and associated new easement dedication shall be at the owner developer's expense. Number two, a minimum general utility easement of 20 feet wide centered on the existing six-inch water main and a minimum of a 25-foot wide centered on the existing 12-inch sewer main shall replace the street right-of-way. Number three, a 30-foot wide drainage easement shall replace the street right-of-way located south of North Street connecting Pollard and Highland Avenue.
Excellent.
And Andrea's been here before. But I guess, I guess Andrea's gonna start first, sorry.
Andrea.
So I have the property pulled up here in Google Earth to get your bearings. It's just south of North Street. This right-of-way was platted when the original neighborhood was built. It was never built for a street, so it's essentially what we call paper right-of-way. There's also some drainage areas through here, and steep topography, it prevented a street from being built, or, in our opinion, the likelihood of a street being built is probably pretty low. The applicant's proposing to vacate the right-of-way. This was discussed at the planning commission meeting, where there was some discussion, there was kind of a split vote, five to three. Several of the commissioners talked about the value of this potential area for a future street connection, and other than that, everybody else voted in favor of it. All the utility companies agreed to vacate it. The city does want to maintain easement through this area for drainage and for water lines. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay. Andrea, you want to address this?
You guys must be exhausted. Okay, I'm Andrea Fornese. I live at 1214 North Shady Lane. And we brought this to the planning, we were talking to the planning office, and they are the ones that brought it up and said, you know, you might want to check and see about doing a vacation on this. So over the past year, we have spent time reaching out to the Washington County, to the neighbors around there, the guy who's adjacent to it now, if you were to go there, he has literally used his 30 feet for the last probably 25, 30 years as a driveway and access. There is a creek, I mean, literally down where you see the trees are, the city would have to build a huge bridge to go across that. It's not like a little dip. It's a large, open creek bed. I don't know if it's Skull Creek, I don't know the names of the creeks there, but county signed off, too, on that parking lot. So we just would hope that you would all would pass it. Thank you.
Okay. City council, have any questions on this?
Oh.
Okay. Any public comment on this?
I thought you were pushing it to dog.
Okay. Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the council. What's the, Alan?
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the second reading.
Sarah.
Actually, I have some concerns about this. Due to the split ruling of the planning commission, I'd really like to go out and visit the site. I didn't intend to do that yesterday, but I got stuck in an airport and wasn't able to. So if we could hold it right here, I would like to come back to it in two weeks.
You have a pen, Alan? I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Everybody just wants to hold it right here? Okay. That we will do then. All right. Number eight, a resolution to adopt the 2017 annual budget and work program.
Good evening.
This is what we've all been waiting for, Paul.
Well, not quite. Been a long evening, so I'm gonna make a couple of brief comments. We had an expanded discussion on the 2017 budget on November 19th, where the mayor's recommended budget was presented to you, and we listened to council members' comments. Also, some of the council members have asked me questions. We've had some conversation outside of that meeting. Entire budget's $155 million. That's up 5.5 percent from the previous year. It's split pretty equally between operations, the increase between operations and capital and debt service. The increase in debt service is actually good news, because we anticipate getting more sales tax in, which will enable us to pay off the sales tax bonds earlier. As far as the general fund's concerned, the general fund element, that's up $1.8 million. The total of the general fund is $43.1 million. Those increases are basically driven by personnel costs. The budget contains 9.45 new FTEs for this year, three of which are in the police department. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Also included in this, in the budget, is the new economic development plan approved by the council and the implementation of that plan. Two wild cards, I might mention, one, they're not salary increases included in this plan, so that's something we'll look at during the first quarter. Number two, as we all know, the county is talking about funding for the county road levy, and depending on what happens there, we might have to talk a little more about that at that point in time. Right now, that's the mayor's recommended budget. We feel that it is affordable. We feel that it's, will apply, will provide for efficient operations. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What questions do we have for Paul? Just?
Paul, um, if I could ask you a quick question, how long have you been CFO of the city?
10 years.
Um, and how many years in a row, this is a balanced budget that we're proposing, correct?
Yes, it is.
And how many years in a row of balanced budgets have we had?
Uh, as far as a balanced budget is concerned, and generally we're keying on the general fund as, general fund Dallas budget because the other funds have capital in them. Uh, since Lionel Jordan's been, uh, been mayor, actually, it's been, uh, five years, I believe. I believe the first one...
We used reserves the first year and then we balanced her the next year.
Seven out of the last eight years.
Right. And the only one that wasn't, was due to...
Recession.
And, and it was more than just a small little hiccup.
We had a little blip.
My, my point is...
We had a little issues back then.
This is even more reason to pass this budget because it is so well thought out as far as the stewardship of the, of the people's money. And so thank you, because you do a tremendous amount of work. And, uh, and I want to thank the mayor and staff for putting this together once again, a balanced budget. I, I wish all the governments worked in that manner, but they don't. But thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate that and, uh, it is a combined effort with the mayor's leadership, certainly your cooperation, and all of the staff works hard on the budget. Thank you.
Uh, Adella?
Yes, Mayor. Um, this is an excellent budget and we do have an excellent record and I'm very, very proud of it. Um, as, uh, many of you know, I did have some concerns, uh, at the first presentation because there were a couple of things that I had hoped, uh, I could see some increase in. And, uh, one of those was, uh, more police vehicles so that we could have more, uh, home storage vehicles by our policemen. And the other was a little bit more, uh, money in the, um, drainage, um, line item since it takes us sometimes two or three years to save up the money to get the, uh, money to do a significant drainage issue. And we do have several in our city. But you know what? I, uh, I want us to have a balanced budget and I couldn't find any place that I could take any money out. It is a great budget and I know that I have a lot of, uh, faith in our CFO and our staff. And I just, uh, don't want to amend the budget, but I, I do want it to be a matter of record. And if we have some, um, magnificent windfall during the year, I will, uh, be bringing it back up. And, uh, because I, I do think that, uh, you know, our police force needs our very, very best and we, we, uh, we need to be able to recruit. And I think that is a, uh, a big item to recruit. And we have, I did get some figures and I'm very happy to report that we have presently 10, um, with this new vehicle we've bought this month, this, um, with this budget in 17, we will have 10, um, cars, I believe. Is that correct?
It is correct, yes.
10? 10 presently, we have 10 patrolmen in the city of Fayetteville, uh, who are able to take their, um, vehicles home with them at night. And as I pointed out, you know, the vehicles last longer because they're not used 24/7. There are a lot of reasons that home storage of vehicles, uh, for our police force is a good idea. But also, um, it is, it, uh, it provides a lot of security for those neighborhoods. And, um, we only have 27 patrolmen who live inside the city of Fayetteville. And so that means that we will, if we have 10 out now, that means if we get seven more, we will have enough for all the officers in Fayetteville to take a car home with them at night. I believe that's correct. Is that right?
We have 17 remaining. This is a snapshot in time, so just want to make sure everyone's clear on this. It's people who have completed their probationary period, completed all of their training, who live within the city limits. Um, that's the eligible pool that we look at. And there are 17 of those who do not have one today, 10 that are out there. And that snapshot could change if someone leaves and we hire someone who lives in the city or someone finishes their probationary period. But, but today, that is the number.
That's right. And that is out of a total of somewhere around a 110 patrolmen. But anyway, I just think it's a, it's a very significant item that I want us to, um, continue to move toward if at all possible. Thank you. But I do not intend to amend this budget. I will support it as it is.
Thank you, Adella. Um, do we have any public comment? I don't believe I asked for that. See most staff out there, so it's probably good. Um, Sarah?
Thank you. Um, like Adella, I had an, if, some, uh, interest areas that were not funded or to the extent that I wanted, which would be sidewalks. I really wanted to see us invest more in sidewalks because right now to build out everything on our, just on our sidewalk request list right now, it would take our crews over 14 years. And I think that's, um, an unacceptable situation when growing a livable transportation network is one of our top goals. However, I've been over this budget with a fine-tuned tooth comb and I do not see any place to cut. Um, I think we have, everything that is funded in this budget is, uh, worthy and necessary. And I think it is a very well-crafted budget and, you know, we're doing the best we can with what we've got. And my priority is having a balanced budget for our city. So with that, I move that we approve the resolution.
Adella?
I say.
I second that.
We have a motion in the second to pass the, uh, the budget. Any final comments or anything? Okay. Thank you all. My, uh, the way we handle money around here, we have so much coming in and so much going out. My job is to keep us between the road ditches and the stairs. So, um, we didn't, uh, yes, Don?
Mayor, just want to make a quick comment. I do this every year, but a lot of time and effort goes into our budget planning. Your feedback is extremely valuable. Uh, the services that we offer our citizens and the feedback we get from them is very valuable. Um, but I want to thank all of our city, uh, department and division directors and managers, Paul and his entire team. Um, you know, we, we have an incredible asset in Paul Becker. Uh, not only his time at the city, but his time in government in general before he came here. And it sure, as the chief of staff, it sure is comfort to know, uh, the confidence that we have. The mayor sets out our priorities for us, what we're, direction he wants us to do. Um, Paul puts our pie together and I work with our, um, operating divisions who really do a lot of work. And so I want to thank them, um, all the funds because we tend to focus on the general fund, but we have a lot of money that we spend serving our citizens, um, that a lot of people touch to get the information. Um, Kevin Springer, Barbara Fell, um, the budget team, Marcia, uh, and the accounting team. A lot of work goes into it. So thank you for your confidence. I love your comment tonight, Autumn Intendant. Uh, we appreciate it. I'll make sure to share it with the staff that doesn't watch the meeting. But, um, we're happy to bring another balanced budget. It was a goal of the mayor's when he ran for office, when he got elected. He ran on it this time and I think he won because of people's confidence in him to deliver on that. So we appreciate your support.
Okay. All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Teddy?
Yes.
Tinnett?
Yes.
Chomar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. What announcements do we have? Don?
You have an announcement?
Yes, sir, I do. Uh, first, for those of you who are planning to come to the historic bridge ribbon cutting tomorrow at 6:30, that, uh, has been canceled.
Yes, we...
Because we are expecting extreme cold weather. If you haven't been, uh, watching it, the wind chill, uh, Wednesday and Thursday are to be in the single-digit areas. So we're gonna schedule it for a time that it's, uh, a little warmer, um, to have that because it's something we definitely want to celebrate and do it in the evening hours where you can see the bridges lit.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna reschedule that. If you had it on your calendar, stay tuned, uh, new date to come. Uh, also want to announce that we, one of our police community building, um, with our police department and officers is taking place. It's called Badges and Bagels. It's going to be at the senior center, uh, at 9:00 AM tomorrow. Thursday, excuse me, Thursday. So, um, if you want to meet officers and, uh, members of our police department, uh, they're going out into the community. They're doing this as a part of, of their effort to make sure we maintain good community relationships. Uh, their department, please come out and attend that. Have a bagel and, uh, meet some of our staff. We're also, we had a table set up tonight. Um, we're conducting a STAR community survey, uh, input. We're seeking input about community views and improvement priorities. It's a part of our STAR rating, uh, to assess that and to get feedback from our public in areas that aren't, um, maybe as hard measured as a, as an actual number. So some of the community opinion, uh, aspect. So please participate in that. Help us get that word out. Encourage people to, um, provide us the input. Citizens have a very, as you saw tonight, um, aren't shy when they know about it. And so we need to make sure we get those out to get their feedback. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Any other announcements? Yes, we'll postpone the bridges. I, I wanted people to be watching the lights instead of hoovering over them, trying to stay warm. Uh, but, all right. It's good work, y'all. I think we've got two items that we haven't taken care of. There was like about 20 items on this agenda. You did some really, really good work tonight. Thank you all very much. We're adjourned.